Good morning colleagues, roll call is now open. So if you're in the council chamber, we have marked you present. And we do need members of 13 council delegates to constitute corps.
Good morning colleagues, roll call is open and we do have thirteen council delegates in the chambers. And we do for the record have three excused absences today. We do have Chair Jesus, Delegate Tlaugh, and Delegate Arviso who are excused today. Okay, and there will be four excused absences. We do have Delegate Nathan Nota. So colleagues, we do have thirteen on the floor and we can call our special session into order at ten thirty-five AM. Again, good morning. We're having a chilly morning here in Winter Rock. We do have a little bit of flurries and it is cold outside. So hopefully all of our relatives are warm throughout the Navajo Nation. Today, we do have a special council session. Today is March twenty-sixth. And we did ring the bell at ten AM this morning and we are here at the Navajo Nation Council Chamber. So per Title II of our code, we do have to have our council sessions within the vicinity of Winter Rock. So that is where we are live broadcasting from this morning. And we do have an agenda before us. It is in a brown teal palette color. So that should be the most updated version of our agenda this morning. So we did call the meeting to order at ten thirty-five AM and invocation. Chair Nez, could you help us with the invocation this morning?
Uh, Kusila, speaker Curly. Nihitchoa, nehidiginn god. Yaganahoh, aran wanhnohna ahoneitsun. Olodo yoont erani, nehidiginn leini, aaltschotne ehhusun khon. Nehinabende galoh, olodo hosonagot, siltana aro't isiyada, aro't ilda khon. N'dan se'to, yat eho khon kos, n'dalto'do yado'tl iskotsinll illa. Endeta, n'altlwoshta'ahadandla'do tsidi da'all adat eroh khon. Thwuntchil, lto'khon bensunzo'to llota, ishi bi'tahaluni, ahut'ahadandla'nla. Aaltschotne ehhusuni bini nae khronch, etshora tiilzundo, dan da i khaton da ini khalle. Nehidiginn leini, ahshonren chachi nappa'to nichilchwonlon. Ah kwichin, hi'des kha'goh, nachalchshun, nachabik eterni, nehichonneron, nachabik eterni, ironon, nachabachi nappa'aaltschonichene. Nehinand, aran lenigigay, kon, President Nigrand, o Vice President, khoro Montoya. Ar o Chief Justice Jane, Speaker Curly, ar o be'sh bahasa ana aaltschokon. Bina neshu deill onll, alliyugokon. Nan de ini khato, nichilna nda'achu'to, chudnat, arap e khonkinta, nahalke'go. Ar nichina neshu deill illa, nichidene, padat ini ke'do. Endeta thatna'snilla chapter, dan nill de lto nat ani hollon'do. Ar xanlso, goshimpadan anis, nlini do, nichidene, aaltschokon. N'alneshde ne'bu washendon, gilhobalchwonlon, heegati't ahay aaltschoh. Endeta, kon, neheseill, inedon, nachabada altcha'akita. Khoro ya'teho, nashtshonahnitlini go, joss, sad ya'tehi. Sad nintchni, sad be'hotot sanlndlini, be'ilchi eiltki do, na'chni tchindol leill nde. Jotsa'aki eg, sinent, arah wolloni bini na, jotsa'be'ni chesinhdo leill nehidin leini. Ya'teho khoro, inabene hits arat ezdin go. De ini khato dahini, naroh leill do ya'teho khoro. Nan neshigin, chahneli, ihagi shin, korona bik eiltki ohaxt edilni, tl呐hat'ahagi. Ar o endeta, ani ltschoh, do yo'nit eron, chaharhashti. N'da'elsi, eta'adahoneitsun, chala ani, ahut'illallah. Et'sisseko, nle'te'go, dan chehasit oro ban, chutzukhesla, ilabannana. Jodini do, ilabannah, wanst eroh jostas, jansandallah, ebini na, e, be'nhachonnsun. Ahut'at ehegin, tanshtedoh, lli'git do, biga'ta, ebini na, nch'eta nda i khandli do, nehibahit. Nsa'go, benllni do, nachanall, lli'chano, chidetle. Nichinsekhes do, nehichue, betzilow insin do, khoro ya'teho i khandli do, leill. Echehe, nehidiginn leini git do, echehe, kon, aaltschonokon be'nehicchitli, ah kwichin, nehiganda halon kon. Nichera dehstew do, ya'teho, nichichin'ya, nehinannish, endeta nehie'tahalon. Endeta lla'to, ahut'at eroba'da hadjopa'ye, ta'tlo'to, lli'gondakre, ahshonrabachi nappa'. Nehidene' do, aaltschonohokhat'ana. Echehe, ndi, ni do leill kon, lli'nitli do, njonago, nichehonawot, aron, njonago. Nichera dehstchiloh, xanlso, goshin, chenda hartkani, shinkon. Dan bech'ena hulgy shigibini na, e, kon ya'teho. Nahosdanal tle'to ya'teho, chilchadahanser do, kon altlos. Bech'inya, naroh atlonro, leill. Echehe, nehidiginn leini do, kon, nichilchwonlonro. Ya'teho shi't ilni, lhwonlso, nch'ehjopa'di, nen yebenashin, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you Chair Nez for invocation this morning. Colleagues, we will go down next to our agenda, number two, recognizing guests and visiting officials. Delegate Tlaugh.
Thank you Madam Chair, Speaker, and also our my colleagues, kodo be'sh bahasa anallan. Ni tlenigekon, be'sh bahasa ani tleni do, koe, nada'hi lsanlini go, special session. Ado, visitors, Nav chapter. Just to inform the Navajo Nation. Vietnam Walk, nde'li, this month, so it started, supposed to start from Teru all the way up into Shiprock. Ishin, chilbedhowsanla, Vietnam ch'undasokwa'aki, aja. E be'benelni to, leill khoro, nichisalalso. Ah kwichin, nichich'ah, e, e, nachatahliado, nikera desi do, la nadahaska. La e yahe, salalso, dan lenigie, e, nichis'ah, das'tginlini go, la e, digindastlini, ah ne, kon, e. We have freedom of religion, freedom of speech, dat. And chini tzeni'to, tsodilzundo, kon, ch'eilti. E hasinlso, nchata osban lenigibenashni'to, leill. Dro't hundred and ten chapters, la ande. Ar obagal ndat, inlen, chalchinda, nlon, kon, e, yahay, nge'sokeda, chinalkeda. Ahut'at, oh, e, nichilhosanlini, khola'to bande'hi, na, e, shin, nachabadiallit, oh leill, hasinigtsgonot. Nachalchindon, nachalchindanleni, adinda'ka'iko, barajopa'ko. Ar o la'e kon, tanda'nda'ka'illakon, e yahay, la'e ro, delndalmas, la'e kintra'oda. Dat'oke, barajopa'ye, dan ne'ko. E shin, khoro tsodizhoh, be'ha'otzi, ibake, hinsun. E shin, ahunchan, chutzukhes, oh leill, digindzilani. Ed e ya, khoro behat's, Madam Speaker, so, holtsorolit'enken.
Thank you Delegate Tlaugh. Next, we have Delegate Daniels.
Echehe, kodo, good morning, kodo, shunat anallanigie, Madam Speaker, echehe, kodo. Ar o kodo, shuna, kodo, Honorable Nez, kodo. Echehe, kodo tsodizanchabaiheinzii, go, kodo, e shin benelni, do na'ana, denilzandol, leill, wadi'tzeh, do na'anas kha'riwuchilhoh. Koe, dahna'dan dekho, nagaidam, sheshe, koe'igi, adam, leillan chandai, zmelah, ahone'aidam, calendar, do na'ana, benatso. I wanna thank Honorable Noble, ya, kodo, nagaidam, dasheshe, gizinhyaa. Nagaidam, na, Apache County Recorder. Ah juhat'alanana, itli, go, echen, chayniya sheshe'icho, ar o na'ana, Twenty First Council, e, bell, bell, ndashesshna'shna'shna, eda. Ar o kodo nagaidam. Uye, kodo nagaidam, echehe, dehshnilson, kodo, nagaid from Office of the Speaker, kodo, Madam Speaker, kodo. Nagaidam, nda'ineshe'dan, nagaid, Monument Valley Welcome Senator, e, ad e, lla'da ilno, e, la'da inachalhaslini, ar o na'ana, kodo, Honorable Noble, de, ad na'ga'nde'icho. E, kodo, nagaidam. Huldjeshten, nagaid, dekui'na, chayna'da, shin chahwalji, reho. Trail Ride, nda'il, ego, nagaid, Navajo Nation Council Trail Ride, nda'il, ego, koe. Nagaidam, tebyntzaskayde, ar elhil, beshalana'da, koe, ar o shte'ho dehshish. E, ar elhi, beshalana'ka, ar ellanika'ye, ar o na'ana, aran, deh be'sh bahasa anday, yeshalana'ka, na'tsos, ar o, aran, hot'ahlana'ka. De kui'tshin shin nda'il, ego, e, ad eshenigie, ad, the late Larry Holiday, koe, ayeggo, e, behat'lszande'ro. Ayeggo, na'ika'al, wad, nagaid, Community of Old Jito, Monument Valley, ze'eggo, i ka'al, wad'ko. Nagaid, dehskazo, da chir, nagaid, stkwidosani, da itcha'itjach, e ya'nda. Ar o na'ana, olthcha'zeh do, aja, hasinlso, de ne'ba'ol, lto'na, ne'ba'szar, e as'iyan, antieno, ahhuldjeshi reho. So, edeit, o, echehe, nichidimni do, leill, kodo, dekai, hasinlso, e, kodo, ar o le, nagaid, candol, slenir, dat, ege, be, bech'hol'lagi, echehe. Ar o na'ana, koe, na'ana huldjesh, olto' nagaidam, ar uki'stchanda, alto', kodo, aja, nagaid, oldje'tcho. Chapter President, linde, lto', kodo, e, nichis'adahanti'tza, lto', kodo, the late Gary Holiday. E, do, nagaid, back in the nineties, eh, da, e, bell, ndashesshna'shna'shna, kodo, Chapter President, la, she'egrezen official, mshla'ide, chahwalji reho. Ze'eggo, e, chilmdashil, nishidan, koe. So, edeit, o benashni'to, leill, shakod, na'ana, kodo, tsodizanigii, shabe' benashni'to, leill, shakod. Ba'alchinda, nlini do, na'ana, achonnedan, leni'da, shabe' benashni'to, leill, nichesodizan, bigi'tcho, kodo. Ar o na'ana, kodo, nagaidam, o, echehe, nad dehshni'to, leill, kodo, njonu, e, o'al, kadekui'tshin, hoda, i, skha'kon, chen, nad'al, nad'althkin, do, na'ana. Nichen, nicheda'y yasohot, on, ar eshel ol'gol, o, hot'an, nagaid, dan chil, koe, nagaid, seltana'ago. Koe, as'i ba'chensun, koe, e aja, lto', ch'elshin, chenda'ha'do, lli'chonana, niches, aja, shin, chenda'ha'do, lli'chonson, e, aran, nichel, shel'ol'gol. Nichel'ol'gol astan, eh, shel'ol'gol, ar eshel ilgoda, hot'at. Ar o, kodo, nagaidam, kodo, Speaker, kodo, deh, needeshkili'tso, nagaidam, moment of silence, agia, nagaidam. Nichi'eki, dan leni'te, kodo, nichis'ad, tadaskha'igi, do, na'ana, hadjopa'dat, ini'gi. Go, ba'alchine, be'benelni, do, leill, e, de kui'go shin, hoda, da, ch'edahoystak, koe, na'ana. Nagaid, n'althalne, bigide'ho, hot'abada, na'ana, hot'akul'da, eh, hot'at, eh, damit edji, benashat'ol'gol, o, insan, kodo, hot'osin, dam. Ah'alchineshi, be'benelni, do, leill, shakon, na'ana, dam, kodo, nagaid, tsodizanishe'dan, edo, be'benelni, do, leill, kodo. Ed e ya, kodo, Speaker, thank you very much.
Oh, echeha, shi'ash, Delegate Daniels. Colleagues, there was a request for a moment of silence, says here as a council. For all of our loved ones, our families, relatives, community members that have passed within this, within recently, within this month. And including, kodo, shujia'abedishno, Mr. Larry Holiday, out from Monument Valley area. I've known him and his wife, their daughter, for many years. And it was sad to hear from the family as well, but prayers to all of our relatives who are grieving and mourning this morning. Eh xin koe'gi e' benelni do le'ill, and being offering that comfort as leadership here this morning. So colleagues, if you could rise and we can do a moment of silence. Thank you, colleagues. Next, we have Chair Nas.
Thank you Speaker. Aro kodo be'shwa'as'an, e' nat'ani no'tleni gi. I would like to recognize our finance staff. I guess, nchata'anis do, ncheda'lneshtene' a'altso's, nchahl'kit, e'udni'le, b'nach'ya'at ehho ni'ch'ena'ra'ali'ge. So, I just want to recognize them. Aro last week, Thursday and Friday, I attended the RICA meetings over at Farmington Civic Center. Radiation Exposure Compensation Act, a'ki Ada Amendment, a'ki Senate. The Senate approved it, and it's headed to Congress for approval. And Joe Biden said, President Joe Biden said, he's ready to sign off on it. And my recognition goes to Philip Harrison, former delegate from Cove, Arizona. I guess, de'kui'shin'ach, dib'ana' n'sh'iyos'na, dene'ya'jo'ba', do'yo'yo'no, hot'aw dene'. L'edsohat'neni gi, ure'nyam yinda'sh'nis'koko. Nat'ani, be'ch'ena'ra'tol'ge, lha' do bal'bed'ahosan da, e' bahat'zit aro dab'at'ol'ne'gi binina, la'ani ched'ene' be'ke'eh'hasdine'. Philip Harrison, ay'se' dib'ana' n'sh'ill'ido Gilbert Badoni, j'ol'ge' do Jerry Benali, do Kathleen So, si do'la'na'ana, ah hot'aw a'ry'andah'sne'nl'la. Ah ko'di'ris, kodo ob'ake'hwin'zin do le'ill do. Speaker, oh, shunat'ani no'tleni gi be'shwa'as'ana, nagaygo, xin arat esd'ekindah'ahl'gre'ko. Ad she' Congress a'ye'je'ho, wa'nat'ani gi'chan'ltso go xin. Kodo la'bi'el, i'ro le'ill koe'gi ni'hi'ka'oh'je' do, or do'tl'ze'dat'io' alt'eh'hot' do. Ni'ligi xin ben'ye' ak'ono'ra't esd'e. Ah ko'ha'gi do, bes'ol'la' san'el'esh'la' a'akondida. Main ticket, ban'da'ha'ilni, go'ats'ya'at eh'son, ob'ab'ans'ks'khes. Ah ko' di'xin'ah'ha'it'ar'ani hi'ch'astki do le'ill, koro Speaker, oh, sponsor gi'chan'ltso go'da. Ak'oi e' kon'pan'ana' n'sh'na'ede' do'tle'ill. Ed e' koe'hot'ab'ahastit' do le'ill. Aro nda da, my other recognition, a'ki'ani'sh Speaker. Eh'che'he' nagayk'indah'ahl'ko' egon, n'chans'anyar on hi'na'lnish'edah lha' be'shwa'as'ana' bel. Aro sh'de'esh'eh'ldo Chair, nat'ani Nes, t'chhot'oh, you Junior Charles Newton. I guess, hot'aw la''an'or, has'anch' do bes'oh'ba'oh'tan'od'ane'ba'yan'ltki'ko. Enda da nch'us'la' bel, has'anch' da, ah hot'ab'ache'inch'igi, a' na'eh'he'lna' sh'de'esh'hot'aw'yan'ltki'gi do be'shwa'as'ana' hot'aw'akondasok. Eh'che'he' ni'hi'ra deh'sh'ni'ldo, she'edlah'os'han'ana' n'sh'ish'ingon'od'oh, sh'abi'gah'tas'lini. Eh'che'he' back to you Speaker.
Thank you Chair Nas, for your recognition and announcements this morning. And we can sit down together and work on some of the sponsorship for the RICA groups. It is going towards the House now, the amendments for extending the program, the compensation program for additional nine years. So, we'll be working with that with you Chair Nas, and then we'll be looking forward to that discussion. And also, next for recognitions, we do have Chair Eugina Charles Newton.
Thank you Speaker, and thank you colleagues for being here. First, I'm going to say Speaker, that we had several people who signed on to have this special council session today. I wonder when we're going to, as council, walk the walk. We talk the talk, we don't walk the walk. And I say that Speaker, because we can, we're always showing up late for council. We should be starting right at ten. We expect our staff, we expect our Navajo Nation employees to be at their workstation when it comes time, like eight o'clock in the morning. We don't say, show up whenever you want. That's not why we were elected. So, I was questioning, who signed the special petition? They should have been here at ten. The fact that we got started late only makes us as council look bad. So, I just really encourage my colleagues to please be on time. If you can't be on time, then text Speaker, let her know you're running late, so that she can make the announcement that people are going to be running late. This is a job. So, I just want to say, Speaker, that you have to put your foot down and start telling all of us here that we need to be on time. And if we're going to be running late, then we need to let you know. It just makes us look bad. So, I want to, in terms of recognition, I always recognize my husband during council, during special council. I think majority of us are married, and we all know, our spouses know, our children know, our grandkids know how much work it is to be a delegate. And then, you know, what we have to do, and I just really applaud, you know, our families who stand beside us and who help us to continue the work that we do for the Navajo people. So, I just want to recognize my husband this morning, Leroy, who is at work. I just want to say that I love you, and I wanted to recognize you this morning. As was spoken earlier, Vietnam veterans are doing their walks this week. I don't know if I'm going to be there on Friday for the Shiprock Vietnam Veterans Event. I was planning on doing that, but we have the Chinab'eh'be'has'ani Act work session that's going to be going on. So, I'm trying to figure out, you know, where, which, you know, where I'm going to go. So, I just want to applaud the Vietnam veterans out there listening and say, welcome home. I also, Speaker, want to speak about the police officers, as was stated by my brother Delegate Rick Nas. We were out there for the Tribal Interior Budget Council. We were successful in pushing two resolutions through Tribal Interior Budget Council. Navajo recommended two years ago that we allow Navajo Nation, under six thirty-eight contract, to hire our own people at eighteen as opposed to twenty-one. And when we put BIA on the spot, Speaker, you saw the way that they were, you know, trying to, trying not to answer the question of whether it was a statutory change that needed to be made or an administrative change. Nevertheless, we were able to successfully get that through. So, we are now pushing to hire at eighteen as opposed to twenty-one. The second is, we were successful in creating or recommending a budget line item be created for the Bureau of Indian Education for school police officers. Not security, school police officers. And to create a budget line item other than, you know, aside from their ISAP dollars, to start putting funding into that budget line item. So, I just want to say, Speaker, I think we did a phenomenal job at TIBIC pushing those initiatives forward. And had it not been for Navajo, these issues would not have been addressed at TIBIC. The last thing I will say is, I want to recognize Herman Buck Junior from Shiprock. He'll be sworn in today with the Farmington Council, the Farmington City Council. Herman is a resident of Shiprock, he has a business there in Shiprock. He lives in Farmington, but we're just really proud of him for serving on the Farmington City Council. I believe that he's going to be the only Navajo serving on that city council. And I think from what I, from what I heard, he may be the first Navajo who's been appointed to that position. So, I want to recognize him and his family at this time for stepping up, for representing all of us at the Farmington City Council, and I look forward to working with him. So, I just want to say that at this time, thank you Speaker.
Thank you Chair Eugina Charles Newton, for recognizing meaning of our Navajo people who have taken big milestones throughout the nation, and also in the state, and also federal governments. Colleagues, also want to recognize a former council delegate, Shuna', on the south side. We have former council delegate Jonathan Hill too, in the audience with here with us. And we also have a former council delegate and former chief of staff too as well, Mr. P. Atiri, on the south side as well. My colleagues, are there any additional recognitions in our chambers today? Going twice, going three times. So, we'll move forth with our agenda, there is also no reserved time. So, we'll go down to number three, Chair Eugina Charles Newton. We'll send out that updated petition as well. And colleagues, as we state, his individual responsibility as a council delegate, you know, our people voted us in to be here within our council chamber. And if that message, you know, it's a, I try to put that message out there individually to each council delegate, that council starts at ten, the petition, so no matter if you signed or did not sign, it is supersedes any meetings or any, unless if it is a government-to-government meeting or any real emergencies that might come up. So, colleagues, and then we can also remind our colleagues of that again. So, going down to number three, review and adopt the agenda. Ms. Johnson, could you help us read our proposed agenda to the record?
Thank you Madam Speaker. Proposed agenda of the Twenty-Fifth Navajo Nation Council, special session Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, ten a.m. Presiding Honorable Crystaline Curly, Twenty-Fifth Navajo Nation Council. One, call meeting to order, roll call invocation, two, recognize guests and visiting officials to the Navajo Nation, three, review and adopt the agenda, four, old business none, five, new business, you have legislation zero zero two zero dash two four. B, legislation zero zero six seven dash two four. Six, close of meeting, announcements and adjournment, Madam Speaker.
Thank you Ms. Johnson. Colleagues, do we have a motion on the floor? Motion by Chair Vince James, is there a second? Second by Chair Rick Nas. Colleagues, are there any comments, questions, amendment to our agenda this morning? We have Vice Chair Slater, then I'll move forward to Chair James. Vice Chair?
Thank you Speaker, good morning colleagues. Item five A requires two-thirds, and I think we only have thirteen. So, I'd like to motion to delete item five A from the agenda.
Thank you Vice Chair, there is a motion on the floor to delete five A. Is there a second? Second by Chair Nas. Colleagues, we do have fourteen present here in the council chamber, but it is a two-thirds legislation meeting, would have sixteen votes excluding myself. So, we do only have thirteen voting members. Are there any questions or comments on this amendment number one? We have Delegate Karadi.
Oh, eh'ha', thank you, Sh'ade'ja, appreciate the motion, she has Delegate Slater. So, understanding that this takes a two-thirds vote, Speaker. What is the status of delegates who have not arrived? Did you, did you let us know how many you expect to be here or who you have not heard from? I'd like to know what that looks like. If we wanted to, because election and the funding is critical to the nation to get our vote. And I know we've been looking at this legislation since earlier this year. So, I just want to see where we're at in terms of the headcount of delegates who are excused, not excused. And, because what I would like to do, instead of removing it from the agenda, is at least here, from the different parties. And if we come to the point where we don't have the vote, the two-thirds vote, then we can take action like to table it. But I would ask for a modification while we wait on that information. If Delegate Slater can consider moving new business B first, and then legislation A, so we could move forward with items where we have the council that we need to be here to vote. And then I will reserve my time, thank you Speaker.
For your information, Delegate Karadi, we do have fourteen members here and thirteen, so that would mean thirteen casting votes. And we do have four excused absences due to government-to-government discussions or emergencies. We have Delegate Arviso, Delegate Law, Chair Jesus, and Delegate Nota that are excused today, so that's four. So, that should leave a presence of delegates of twenty. And as of communications to absent delegates, are, we do only, only got response from two that will be running late. And I have three that have not given a response. So, some of the delegates that are not here, we have two, or we have three that signed the petition that are not here. And out of those three, there are two of them, they said they are running late. Vice Chair Slater? First, we'll go to Chair James. This is to amendment number one.
Eh'che'he' dan Speaker, and then members of the Twenty-Fifth Navajo Nation Council. She'ado petition sign ish'lad, excuse that's ish'edil'li'ha'wagon'ash'ta' do le'ill. Kodo, I was waiting for a response from Honorable Slater, the request coming from Honorable Karadi. If not, I'd like to also make that request that we table legislation zero zero two zero dash two four until the end of our special council session. So, I'd like to see if he would be able to make that modification to his motion. Reserve my time, Speaker, thank you.
We have reserved time for eleven? Thank you Chair James for that request for modification to put new business five A towards the end of the agenda. Vice Chair Slater?
Thank you, I apologize, I thought that legislations waiving a part of the Navajo Nation Code requiring two-thirds had to be at the beginning of an agenda, two-thirds, so. Dana, is that right? Can you give me a thumbs up? Okay, so, you know, what I was going to propose is, is exactly what I was doing, delete it, and then we would add it back onto the agenda if we do obtain sixteen members to make it a reality, or sixteen voting members. So, you have to have seventeen here. And then, if we table this, you know, we only have two tables that are available to us because it's emergency legislation, this is the final authority. So, if we table it, don't get sixteen, that's one tabling, then one more, the legislation dies, have to be introduced again. So, just trying to think through this logically, it made sense to delete it, and then we can add it back on. I'm fully committed to that, I'm here. add it back on. I'm fully committed to that. I'm here to vote on this legislation. I was ready to vote on it the last time when we didn't make 16. Thank you.
Vice Chair Slater, that is correct, that two-thirds legislation per legal council and the rules of order does have to go first. So we do have two options, either go into 5A and doing a motion and the second, and then there would be a motion to table towards however long that we can bring it back. So that's one option. The other option is how your motion stands right now is deletion of 5A, and then bringing it back will require suspension of floor rules, would be 16 votes. So either way, we'll need 16 votes. Vice Chair Slater?
Thank you, colleagues. My preference is not to table because it just starts that tabling clock, but, so I'm going to offer this emotion, this motion as it stands right now. If the preference is to table, vote this down, and I'll support that the next way, but this is my preference. Thank you.
We have, I think, a point of order, Chair Eugenio Charles Newton.
Thank you, Speaker. I raised a point of order, Speaker, because I, so I'm going back into my, into my notes. We, this council, Speaker, are you listening? This council, the 25th Navajo Nation Council, we have passed UUFB legislations in the past without the 16 votes. And as I recall, and I took notes on this, as I recall, the Chief Legislative Counsel, Ms. Dana Barbaroff, explained to us that there are certain times when UUFB doesn't require the 16 votes. And I remember myself and Delegate Norman Begay questioned that for a UUFB legislation that went through with a majority vote. So before Delegate Slater, before you remove this legislation for UUFB, I want to know whether that majority vote qualifies for this particular legislation. And I remember the response, and I'm looking through my notes right now, I remember the response was, "It depends." And both myself and Delegate Norman Begay tried to argue, it's UUFB, it requires 16 votes, it requires two-thirds votes. So can we look at that rule first before we delete it from the agenda? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair Eugenio Charles Newton, for that point of order, just for clarification, but Dana can correct me if I'm wrong. This UUFB request has a waiver, meaning that it is a recurring cost to one of the line budget items. So it would, if it was non-occurring cost, then it would just be a majority vote. And then, Ms. Barbaroff, maybe you can go through the steps of Vice Chair Slater's motion. I know there was a question on the floor. If we do delete it off our agenda, does, can we put it back on the agenda later on in the day, on the same agenda? Ms. Barbaroff?
Thank you very much. This is Dana Barbaroff, Chief Legislative Counsel, for the record. Actually, let me just say that Speaker was correct in the why this legislation needs a two-thirds vote. UUFB legislations need a two-thirds vote when there is a waiver of Navajo law. In this one, there is a waiver of sections of the Appropriation Act, that's why it needs a two-thirds vote. If you don't need a waiver for UUFB allocations, they are, they are then regular votes. So Delegate Slater. Delegate Slater is contemplating, or we're discussing deleting this legislation off the agenda, and then if you get the 16 delegates here, then to add it back on the agenda. Unfortunately, per Navajo Nation Council Rule 10D, it states legislation stricken from an agenda shall not be added to the agenda from which it was stricken. Therefore, if council deletes 0020-24, it cannot be added back on to today's agenda. That you do not, and also you cannot move 0020-24 as to the second, second item on your agenda because you have to do two-thirds vote legislations first. And to waive those rules, those are council rules, you have to have a two-thirds vote, full council, so you are in a challenging position this morning. Back to you, Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barbaroff. Vice Chair Slater, that was, if there is a deletion, we can add it back on to the agenda per Rule 10D. Next for, to amendment number one, we have Delegate Daniels.
Ikehahtan, Madam Speaker. Qudona gayda, suda amendment, qudona gayda, motion to delete legislation makagi. Qudona, after listening to, after hearing Legislative Counsel, Chief Legislative Counsel Barbaroff. So what I'm thinking is to go into recess. Go into recess for an hour or two.
Thank you, Delegate Daniels. There is that recommendation to recess. I know from our colleagues, one is, we'll be arriving in 10 minutes, another in 30 minutes, from the two that... So I think my recommendation is that we can just accept a motion and a second, and then we can just hear the 20-minute presentation, so colleagues will at least know that, then we can table towards the end of the day. So then you table it, and then you can bring it back once we do have 16 votes. So that would be just my recommendation, unless, colleagues, if there is any opposition to recessing. Now, yet we do have opposition to recessing. So Vice Chair Slater? Vice Chair Slater?
Okay, thank you. I was trying to find the exact reference to 10D. And I guess my interpretation of 10D is that agenda means an approved agenda, and what we have before is his a proposed agenda. And so to me, it's if we approved an agenda with an item and then deleted it before, and then deleted it after, I think the whole point is to not get into a back and forth about how those things, and that's generally how these rules are put together. But when you have an approved one, so I don't know, I have a difference of opinion with the Chief Legislative Counsel, but I'm going to let that be. I'm going to withdraw my motion. Colleagues, it sounds like the people who are talking on the floor want to move forward with hearing a presentation, so let's go ahead and do that.
There is a withdrawal from Vice Chair Slater, dissecuting and concurs with that withdrawal. Colleagues, going back to the main motion of our agenda. We have Chair James. This is to the main motion of our agenda. I think you were in queue. Oh, it updated. Okay, there's none. All right, I don't have any reserved time for our main motion on adopting our agenda, colleagues. Second time. Third time, two minutes on the board to adopt our agenda today. Colleagues, we have less than 20 seconds on the board. We have Chair Karadi. How do you vote? The time did expire on the clock. Delegate Karadi votes green. Delegate Dr. Andines. Delegate Lester Yasi, Delegate Odisso, Delegate Curtis Yunito, Delegate Cheryl and Yasi, Vice Chair Simonsen. So colleagues, that is a full vote here from the floor. We have 13 in favor, zero opposed with Speaker not voting. Going down with our agenda, colleagues, our agenda stays as is. We are on number four, old business none, number five, new business. At this time, I'd like to ask Chair Eugenio Charles Newton to preside over this portion of the meeting. Good morning, colleagues. Okay, so I'll be assisting Speaker as she presents her legislation. We do have legislation number zero. Oh, the 2-0. Okay, I'm sorry, legislation number 0020-24, sponsored by Speaker Kristalene Curly. Let's go ahead and get that legislation read into the record stack. Can you assist me, please?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Pro temp. Item A, legislation 0020-24, in action relating to an emergency approving $965,485 from the unreserved undesignated fund balance UUFB for the Navajo Election Administration for its expenses in preparation for the 2024 nomination elections, waiving 12 NNC, Section 820E, Section 820F, Section 820J, and Section 820L. This is a two-thirds legislation. Prime sponsor is Honorable Kristalene Curly. Per Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order, legislation has been read into record by electronic voice recording. Madam Speaker, pro temp.
Thank you for that, Julissa. So with that, Council. We do have legislation number 0020-24 that has been read into the record. The sponsor is here today. Can I get a motion and a second at this time? Motion made by Delegate Herman Daniels, second made by Delegate Vince James. I'm going to go ahead and at this time turn the floor over to Speaker to present her legislation at this time. Upon completion, Speaker, if you could let me know that you're done with your presentation so that we can turn the floor over to our colleagues for questions. Speaker, a motion has been made by Delegate Herman Daniels, the second by Delegate Vince James. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Pro temp Speaker, for allowing us, giving us 20 minutes on the floor to present legislation 0020-24. Again, colleagues, we are within that season of election time again every two years, and also special elections. Here, joined by the Navajo Nation Election Administration and also the Election Board, members of the Election Board. And this will be a request from the UUFB for 2024 Navajo Nation chapter elections, which does include the positions of chapter officials, grazing committee members, land board members, farm board members, school board members, and also aid fogg officials that either be commissioners or councils, and also including Navajo Board of Elections Supervisors. Right now, colleagues, we do have a schedule for our elections this year. Candidate filing period is from, it does open on April 25, 2024, and then ending on May 8, 2024. And this is, the primary elections will be held on July 30. And that was approved during last week's sessions on changing of the primary date. And our general election for Navajo Nation is scheduled on a Tuesday, November 5 of 2024. During major elections like this coming year, additional staff are needed to assist with candidate filing in person, absentee voting, mailing of absentee ballots, registering eligible people to vote. Each election, the administration mails out approximately 3,000 absentee ballots and provides in-person voting to approximately over 3,000. And administration will be promoting the 2024 elections through attendance, chapter meetings, agency council meeting, and other meetings upon requests. The administration will coordinate with county and state election offices on the 2024 election dates, and this will also include sharing of And this will also include sharing of polling places, voter registration drives, and other media efforts or communication efforts. The administration will be meeting with automated election services regarding the voter registration data system and ballot printing. So this UUFB request will be helping to fund our two thousand twenty-four upcoming elections. And due to a lack of funding, the administration has not, has been also conducting special elections, two agency-wide positions in Western Navajo Agency, and also the vacancy for at-large Navajo Nation Council delegate position in Eastern Navajo Agency, which does include six chapters. I believe that election, special election is happening today. And special election funding, it was not included part of the annual budget since we did not foresee any type of special elections needed throughout the year. So this will be including that as well. But at this time, I'll give the floor over to our election administration and also one of our board members this morning. Thank you, colleagues.
Ya't e shunantai. Kha'e ea't sh'eviranka curleyin shea ma'edash gijnin shlo t'odich ini basish ch'in. T'abmaha edash ch'ero tu'hiadlini edash shunal. Aro k'oj' interim director for Navajo Election Administration. Ko di kha'e beso ini ke'di t'atnas nelba na'i ni'te beb'innantai. Ke'ap'innantai, ol'trap'innantai, ea'da'at eh. Na'k'innachap'ik eh. Ee di, in'a'i nell Navajo Nation ju. O ko, n'le budget gochahal'jixto. Do ea't en'fannal'ita. Ko, ea'n'a allat'beiso ini ke'd. Ko di'a'a hona nadza di t'atnas nelba i nell'i gi. Ko di absentee voting, n'le phoenix date da'yo absentee voting ballots da'yo ke'do. Ahot'a da'da' il'kuda natsosanat'ai, edel'oh, ko ea'de additional staff. Ad'a two, two agency per staff kodago. Even though there's more chapters in certain agencies. Ko ea hot'a, we need the additional staff, do the ballot printing. Aro di kha'e bahane election ju, ini kha'e election day change'elia. Ee'da'at eh bahane eh, eh'to'oh, eh'di bixto. Aro di n'chana dal'ne'shigi at election, on election day. El'to' bech'insla, n'le t'atnas nelba gandan'nelo. Eh b'ln'dail'ne'sho eh'arei poll officials, be'di ni election day workers. Eh'idil'ne'to ea hot'a b'lna'dail'ne'sho, ko bech'insla. Aro la'la' y'neilt ke'chi poll judge be'di noh, eh'ma'ili ch'el'to'oh. Ben ye bech'insla di voting booth, voting machines da'ch'ei di ye ho, election supply box, ea hot'a. Ko ona'ol'ch'ah'ha'gi'd eh'adi di twenty twenty-four election.
Ya't eh beni shunantai, be'tmahas anen'ol'lenigi. Aro shumah, Madam Speaker, aro Pro temp Speaker ndo. Ch'eha'ak'oh encha'hol' a'do kon sa'be edan'adit ahin lenigi k'od'oh nih'ta don'niltsos'gi shunantai. Eh do'ach'ho'da kha'e beni hika'ado jahnit son'ya edenepa. Ash'yl'tsago eh ya eh beni l'ne'to. Ed'a'ol' il'ligi da'ran'ti il'ke'na nell'oh eh'da innixdi kad'i i'ni'l. Ben ye'ta'ena da' dil'ne'to, ash'yl'tsago'd ne'hot'oh ya'n sak'yes el'to'oh. Ko eh beni na eh k'od'oh chait'a da eh ya. Nih'ka'na do'hl'wll' be'tmahasa anen'ol'lenigi di ya'la'ah'ha'gi ya'ls'ho eh nag'yl'na. A'do nich'yl'at' Navajo Nation Board of Election Supervisor i'ni'l ju benan'tai da'ni'tlenigi eh. K'od'oh n'chadil'ne'to gi eh ya eh ya. Ben ye'ta'ed'ni'l sin'noh eh ya't ah'uit'ju nah'lo'eh be'tyil'ki do'k'oj'eh nich'nan'tai. Shumah, Madam Speaker, el'to'oh do'ch'oh n'chab'ill'bahos'na'hot'ig ad'i nell'ligi do'a'ana'ree ahol'jex'na'eh hot'eh. I'ni'l'ligi ba'nah'hal'jex'ho'nda beso nav'ki. Ko t'alha'at a'kon'ha'da beso la'nan'tei hot'jo'do' il'it'at dan'ich'yl'at'. Ko eh beni na'ed'a'ko eh nih'chn'eh'ha'ikall' shunantai. Ko eh'gi, eh'shi do'ch'oh n'chab'innal'ni'to'el'el'to'oh do'ch'oh n'ch'ah'ha'nos'na'ol'el'el. Ko eh'shi na'ree hot'ej'six'da t'ach'ho'eh chait'a da'na'il'ke'do'shi'ta'at'at'at' do'ni'l. Ande'di kad'eh ya kon i'ni'l bahol'jix'ip'n'atch'eh eh kon ya'li'kin'i ke'di. Eh'gi se'ben'ton'ish, eh'gi se'ben'na'nnish'tol'el'el. Chala n'chanda do'ln'ne'shigi, do'ch'oh n'chandal'ne'shigi ah'uit'ju. Ta'dat, edat, eh'de'ho. K'od'oh beso gi ben'ton'ish'ipo'oi beni na'go. Ta'da' po'ohlah'oh, kosh'nan'tai kha'e'd eh ya nich'ini ke'do ben hik'ek'sol'si don'its'od eh ya eh ben ye. N'chani'tsa'ak'okon do'nda do'ln'ne'shigi nde'i i'ni'l ben ye. Al'jep'ba da'han'ed'ol'el'ligi. Eh'do'ye'go nich'nan'ne'sh'odil'ni'l chala eh'gi se'beni na'ligi eh ya eh nich'yl'bahos'na'eh kha'e'd. Na'k'edam'oo yetan eh i'ni'l be'tsh'egi ba'han'yl'te'ha'nan'igeh eh ta'testan. Na'ree ch'el'ayth thirty ch'et'at'estani ben'atch'ek'oh eh. Na'ree go'nh'has'ago be'tl'na'tlehen'nel'ko do'ch'ne'ch'ne'ke'hat'ena'ko eh han'ne'igi il'ino'el'el. Ye'go'ch'ho'ba'hu'il'na'oh ben'atch'et'ch'ne'ki kid'et'ot'ek'yl'ot'el'el la'ed'yon'el'ch'hot'oh eh ya. Pan'si kes'el'to'oh ko eh beni na'el'ta do'ti beso ben'ti ni'l'hi'do'aj'ch'ido' il'ko eh beni na eh ya. Ya'oh eh ya ch'oh eh ben hich'ed'ani'ti ch'esh'nan'tai kha'e'shi eh n'chab'ah'ha'nos'na'ol'el'to'oh. A'ch'eha'el'to'oh k'od'oh do'ch'oh n'chab'eh'ki ke'do'ch'oh n'chab'innal'z'ol'ni'oh. N'sh'ha'go eh'ch'eha'el'el'to'oh ash'yl'ni'l'sko eh'de na'eba'it'ne'oh k'eha'esh'nan'tai k'od'oh shah'hol'ha'gi.
Gosh'ni ch'eha'ak'oh, ch'eha'na'na twenty-fifth Nomination Council. So we do have the legislation before you. We do have all the budget forms attached for any additional questions. So I want to thank, k'od'oh sh'ya'aj, thank you for being here with us. Mr. Layer Noble and a'do k'od'oh sh'omah, Director of our Election Administration. Eh kha'e'gi eh, kha'e'gn'ch'ah'ha'ta'sol'ha'gi eh ba'keh'ne'izen. But at this time, we stand for any questions. Thank you, Pro temp Speaker.
Thank you for the presentation, Speaker, on your Legislation Number Zero Zero Two Zero Two Four. As a reminder, colleagues, under the Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order Rule Eleven, you have five minutes to debate your, to debate this legislation, and don't forget to reserve your time. So I just want to remind you of that again, under Rule Eleven of the Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order. So with that, do we have any questions at this time? We do. We have Delegate Vince James. You have five minutes to debate the legislation. Delegate James, the floor is yours.
Ch'eha'da sh'nal'eh Pro temp Speaker, a'do na'na k'od'oh Speaker Curly, a'do staff n'ch'lenigi from the Election Administration Office, a'do k'od'oh hil'tan'has'ist'ani. K'od'oh sh'nal'eh do'ch'ade be'ha'zi from Election Office. Ad'k'od'oh in'a'i nell'ligi bah beso ini ke'd ch'khot'a eh eh be'ha'zi. Ak'wande, in the legislation, you have your budget forms attached. And I'm trying to understand ch'eh'ed n'chab'iget isht'ch'in'ak'oh. It's not corresponding for the current election that's coming up. Ok'oh, you have Exhibit A, you have maintenance tech that we're going to fund at Central Administration Office. You have temporary employees at Central Administration Office. And then you have travel expense for three staff only, for meals, lodging, mileage, and that's for only three staff at Administration. And then when you move on and you go further, you provide the position and assignments for each of the position at Central Administration Office. And then further on, you, you have the information for, I'm assuming, eight hundred and eighty poll officials? Is that, are you gonna hire eight hundred and eighty employees? So eh 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 khot'a, I'm assuming that that's for the whole Navajo Nation. But when you start, when I start looking at it with the breakdown by agency, it doesn't equal the eight hundred and eighty employees again. Ak'oh, ak'ha'gi bah na'adidi sh'k'el'. And then you have other stuff in there for general office supplies, furniture and equipments for offices. And I'm trying to understand why you have furniture and equipments there. And when reality, we need more of the voting booths that need to be updated, more of high-technology equipment that needs to be updated at the chapters. Sha'ha'ne eh kha'e'gi beni ya eh eh beso in'oh ke'd na'ko. And then you're gonna lease and rent storage buildings? How does that correspond with the upcoming election? Why do you need to lease and get much, or to get buildings and storage spaces? And then postage? And then why, and then there's sell your phones on here? I'm just trying to get an idea of how your title says for, the title of the legislation says for expense in preparation for the two thousand twenty-four Navajo Nation election. And then when you look to page three of four, under Section Two Finding, line seven, you have to hire temporary employees in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-five thousand. But that doesn't correspond with your budget forms. If we're gonna be renting buildings and renting spaces, getting maintenance techs, purchasing furnitures. I'm trying to have the understanding, and then in the same legislation of page three of four, to renovate its facilities is on line eight again. But then in your budget form, there's nowhere that it breaks down to renovate facilities again. And so I'm trying to understand how this is adequately prepared for the upcoming two thousand twenty-four Navajo Nation election that has to be considered and conducted throughout the whole Navajo Nation. Reserve my time. Thank you.
Reserve time at twenty-eight seconds for Delegate Vince James. Next in the queue, we have Delegate Danny Simpson. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Pro temp Speaker, members of the twenty-fifth Council, Madam Speaker, your agent. Good morning, good evening, morning still. So also, I'd like to say good morning to the staff, guests who are here. Madam Pro temp Speaker, I just need clarification, and it goes back to page three of four. And going back to Section Two, Section Two Findings and C. And again, a request for clarification reoccurring. Because we talked about this morning before we accepted the agenda, that this legislation will require sixteen votes to pass. And the reason why I'm asking is what's the definition of, this we're going to, obviously, let's say, Council or DOJ? What's the definition of recurring? Is that on every physical, every physical year? Because that would assume that's recurring when you're gonna fund something that has to be every physical year. But primary election for a chapter, that's every two years. And referendum, it's very seldom. Then also going back to Tubus City, Tubus City don't have elections every year. I don't think it's a referendum election for Navajo Nation every single year. So the chapter election happens every two years, not every single year. And going back, and so I'm trying to figure this out, how OS Controller considers recurring. If the definition does state recurring every physical year, then I understand that part. So Madam Pro temp Speaker, I'd like to get clarification and get the definition of recurring, and I reserve my time. Pro temp Speaker, okay.
Delegate Simpson, your reserve time is three minutes and nine seconds. We don't have anybody else in the queue, so I'll go ahead and turn the floor back over to Speaker to answer the questions that have been posed by your colleagues, Delegate Vince James and Delegate Danny Simpson. Speaker, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Pro temp Speaker. There was questions regarding the budget forms and corresponding to legislation, specifically to page three of four, the finding sections. And I'll have Elections Administration answer specifically to those questions, so I'll turn the floor over.
Okay, shunantai. I'm gonna go item by item. Kha'e na'i de ke'digi, el'sha'gi eh maintenance technician ini ke'd. N'le election offices nik'yl'has'ago, we are in old buildings. Ko facility maintenance, like as an example Shiprock, they're no longer going to service our building out there. So in order for us to be able to keep up to par with our buildings, we're asking for a maintenance technician. So it may not be a part of the election, but because we do have voters coming into our buildings, we do need to keep that in working order. Aro, the, so that's one. And these buildings have been condemned. Staff are in these condemned buildings. And just to keep it up and keep staff safe, we do need renovations. We're no longer able to depend on facility maintenance to do the upkeep because of the condemned buildings. Eh hot', so ea'n'a maintenance technician ini ke'd. It's a safety issue, not only for staff, but also for voters that are going to be coming into our polling, our polling places to vote. Aro, aro hona'ei, okay. Temporary employee, okay, di'da budget, n'le last year Christmas, da'te'elia. Ko at the time, we didn't really work out our budget, and due to the small spaces in our offices, auto workforce state, we get some help. Ko we only limit it to three, three employees. And this is not for central office, this is going out to the agency levels. It would be nice to get more here, n'le agencies in dal'ne'sh'oj'oj'. N'le early voting, we get Shiprock, Fort Defiance, Eastern, Chinli, Western. The voters oi'ul'ke'dit'eh to vote early. Aro the other one is eight hundred and eighty poll officials. Okay, if there is, by law, we're allowed four, four, four poll officials per chapter. Ak'wet'ain de la'hot'ne'el'edad'at'ach'ynli, Shiprock, Fort Defiance, we do hire additional. Aro, if there's a referendum election included on the ballot, go. A'de el'to'oh, we need additional poll officials. Ash'eh bah'ha'nos'na'le election day, da'j'ah'ha', you only have a few individuals sitting and to do a Navajo Nation election. You look at the county, you have like ten, fifteen people. So we're, in comparison, we're really low in on our poll officials. So we're, in comparison, we're really low in on our poll officials. So we are looking to increase that poll officials. Auto, the other one is general office supplies. Furniture, we did need a few things. We're still needing like little, like computer stands in our offices. Auto, voting booths, that is part of the budget, the voting booth. To make it compliant with ADA the best we can, we're trying to get the voting booths that have four-in-one and one for wheelchair, ADA compliant. So auto, storage buildings. If we acquire the voting booths, then we will require storage buildings to place our, to store our voting booths. Voting booths, so that's why we are asking for our voting booths. And we do have storage available in Fort Defiance, but they, we're using that for election supplies, unused election supplies which we take out. So the storage buildings is mainly for storing of the voting booths. Renovate, renovation of facilities. Again, we have Chinli office that is very rundown. Floors, it's really rundown, but we're still allowing staff to work in the building because we don't have other, there's no other spaces in the Chinli area. So a, renovate, renovate. And it is a slow process, but it is, it is happening. It is in... Under Repair and Maintenance, it's in six thousand, page seven of nine. Auto. Okay, I think this was more of a legal question. Yeah, so I hope I answered your questions or at least have you a better understanding. Oh, postage. Okay, postage. Every election, we are mailing over, I'd say about fifteen hundred to three thousand absentee ballots. And so one package costs is like almost two dollars. Your ballot, they're thick. Wave is close to two dollars. Auto, postage, auto voter receipt, voter registration is on a daily basis. Voter receipt, we can send out. That's where the postage comes in.
Thank you, Ms. Curly, for your responses in that. Colleagues, there was also a question by Delegate Simpson on definition of reoccurring costs. And I'll refer that question to Office of Legal Counsel to help answer that question.
Good morning. What Delegate Simpson asked was an explanation for reoccurring versus non-reoccurring. And I think that the framework for that question or why that question becomes important or such is if you look at page two, starting on line twelve F, that kind of leads you through the process. You can read that when you have time or now. But reoccurring, essentially, normal usage is it just keeps happening over and over again. Under the Navajo Nations Appropriations Act at twelve N and C, eight twenty E and F and L, payment of government operating expenses shall be from recurring revenues. That means revenues that keep recurring, happen every year. And payment of non-reoccurring expenses shall be from non-reoccurring revenues. So the question is whether the, and the UUFB, let me back up. The UUFB is considered non-reoccurring. It's a non-reoccurring fund. The question that the Controller's Office is responsible for answering in UUFB requests, and that is set forth at eight twenty F, is for determining whether the expense is recurring or non-recurring. And a lot of that is accounting, verbiage definitions, et cetera. So my request for a really thorough explanation is to what goes into a definition of recurring versus non-reoccurring would be to have Mr. McCabe, the Controller, talk about that. Back to you, Madam Speaker Pro Tem. Madam Speaker.
Speaker, the floor's been given back to you by your, by Chief Legislative Council. Are you finished with your presentation or answering the questions?
Thank you, Pro Tem Speaker. Thank you again, colleagues, for your questions. And this is a, it is a request for nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-five. And if you do have any specific questions to the amounts, and then we can provide that to Ms. Curly. I know this is a two-thirds legislation, just an update on the text messages with colleagues that are not here, that are not excused. Unfortunately, it looks like we won't have the necessary votes today for this legislation. So just an announcement, colleagues, and I'll return back the floor over to you, Pro Tem Speaker.
Thank you for that, Speaker. We do have another person in the queue. I'm going to go ahead and call upon them before I go back to reserve time. Chair Parrish, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, Speaker Pro Tem. And thank you, Speaker, for bringing this legislation for the council. I just had a question about the source of funding for this legislation. During the general funds budgeting process, I don't recall seeing an unmet need. However, if I might have over, maybe that was not put before the Budget and Finance Committee, before it was made a recommendation to the council. Speaker, could you maybe share with us the unmet needs of the election office through the budgeting process? If that was presented to Budget and Finance or if it was presented to the council? Or why you chose to go with the legislation, UUFB legislation, over supplemental budget? Just some questions about your thought process on the legislation. I reserve my time. Thank you.
Reserve time at three minutes and fifty-nine seconds. Chair Parrish. We have another person in the queue, Delegate Andy Nas. Colleagues, so the way that, the way that we'll do this is if there's any new people that have been added to the queue, I'll go ahead and go to them first before we go back to reserve time. And I'll do two delegates' questions, and then I'll turn it back over to the Speaker to make sure that your questions are answered. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor over at this time to Delegate Andy Nas, who has a question. Point of privilege by Delegate Danny Simpson. Delegate Danny Simpson, you called a point of privilege under Rule...
Sixteen.
Rule sixteen of the Council Rules of Order. What is your point of privilege?
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem Speaker, Madam Speaker, members of Twenty-Fifth Council, guests. Madam Pro Tem Speaker, I didn't get the full answer from Officer, let's say, Council. Officer Council wanted to have Officer Controller, Controller himself, to answer my question in reference to the reoccurring. Again, as I stated, the question is, to me, reoccurring means on an annual basis. But chapter elections happens every two years. Tubus City election probably happens every five years on certain items. Then referendum, very seldom. So I'm trying to get the clarification, how this legislation is, again, Exhibit B states this is recurring for Officer Controller. So I need to know if the recurrence is on an annual basis. If that is recurring, then I believe this destination should not be, recurrence should not be specified in this legislation. So I need an answer from Officer Controller, Madam Pro Tem Speaker.
Thank you for that, Delegate Simpson. And again, under Rule sixteen, point of privilege, under the Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order, Delegate Simpson, your question is in line with the point of privilege as it is requesting additional comments. And in this case, I believe that precedence has been set where in instances where a delegate's question hasn't been answered, they can and have in the past called a point of privilege. So with that being said, Speaker, I'm going to turn it back over to you since Delegate Simpson asks specific questions that were not answered, and he'd like that answer before we proceed forward. And I do want to point out that under Rule sixteen C, it does state that the Speaker shall immediately address the point of privilege raised by the delegate pursuant to Paragraph B before proceeding with the session. So with that, I cannot proceed forward with Delegate Andy Nas's question until Delegate Danny Simpson's question or his point of privilege has been addressed. Speaker, as the sponsor, I'm turning the floor back over to you.
Thank you, Pro Tem Speaker. Thank you for that point of privilege. Delegate Simpson, we do have the Controller here with us. So, Pro Tem Speaker, if you could allow me to, I know there is only two limits of agents during Navajo Nation Council, but due to that point of privilege, I respectfully request to have Controller take one of these agents or presenter's seat here just to answer to that specific question.
Thank you for that, Speaker and colleagues. Under Rule ten of the Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order, under ten E, it does state that the Speaker needs to designate their agents at the time that the presentation is being provided. In this case, she did, she did provide the names of her two agents. Under Rule ten F, it does state that she can only, a presenter can only have two agents. So at this time, if there are no objections, we'll go ahead and turn the floor over to Mr. Sean McCabe since a point of privilege has been called and the question has been directed to the Controller. Controller McCabe, the floor is yours.
Okay, I got it. Yeah. Thank you, Sheneta, Pro Tem Speaker, Charles Newton, and yeah, Sheneta, for the question. So the, the, the terms recurring and non-reoccurring, there's not a, from an accounting standpoint, a black and white definition. The position of the Office of the Controller, in this case, we took the position of recurring because this was, at the time, a request out of unmet needs or for unmet needs. And we determined that because unmet needs are a recurring budget issue, if you will, that we determined this one particular in case, or this particular request to be recurring for recurring expenditures out of unmet needs. When I say there's no black and white definition, recurring, really, it could be a year, but in this case, it recurs every two years. And so I don't think we were in a position to say that it would be non-recurring because of the timeframe. But given that and the fact that this was an original request for unmet needs, we counted it as, we determined it to be recurring. So I hope that answers the question. Yeah.
Speaker, are you good with that, with the answer from your agent?
Thank you, Pro Tem Speaker. I believe that was just addressing the point of privilege. So I think that, I don't know if that answers Delegate Simpson's questions, but Controller is here for any other additional questions or point of privileges needed. Thank you, Pro Tem Speaker.
Thank you for that, Speaker. Delegate Simpson, did that answer your question? I'm sorry, your point of privilege.
Thank you, Pro Tem Speaker, Madam Speaker, your agent, Mr. McCabe, and all members of Twenty-Fifth Council. As was stated by Mr. McCabe, there's really no black and white definition on recurring. And when, I believe when that, to my understanding, serving on a previous, serving on Budget Finance, and we had to always go back to the Twenty-Fifth Council. And what was stated during that time, recurring was on annual basis. And that's why I'm going off, why is this being considered recurring? Because chapter election happens every two years. Again, Tubus City, I don't know who they're electing on, but it doesn't happen every single year. Then the referendum, very seldom. So, Madam Pro Tem Speaker and members of the council, we'll definitely need guidance on, again, this is internal, how to decide this was decided as recurring, but without a black and white definition. So I'm going to state this, that this is not recurring. Okay, this expense does not recur every single year. So I will need guidance on, from Officer, let's say, Council, DOJ, even Mr. McCabe, since this not black, the definition of recurring is not black and white. I believe we need to delete that recurring off this legislation. Madam Pro Tem Speaker, Madam Speaker, we need your guidance on this. Thank you, Pro Tem Speaker and Madam Speaker, Agent, members of Twenty-Fifth Council. Thank you.
Delegate Simpson, thank you for that. Just so I'm clear here, your point of privilege is to request the, a definition from Department of Justice on the reoccurring language that's used in the statute. Is that correct?
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem Speaker. Again, as is stated by Mr. McCabe, there's no black and white definition. So then, coming up, just meaning recurring, it came internally from the Office of Controller. Since there's no black and white definition of recurring in our codes, this should not be, again, being a former delegate and serve on Budget Finance, it goes back to what we were told back then that recurring means on annual basis. So with this being, like I stated before, the election for Tubus City, chapter election, and also on the referendum. Madam Speaker, I'd like to call for a recess to make sure that Officer, let's say, Council, DOJ, OS Controller clarify that, make sure that it is by, not just internal policy. If there is something that's very valid, where this can be considered as recurring, then I'll be okay with it. But right now, what Mr. McCabe stated, there's no black and white definition of recurring. So, Madam Pro Tem Speaker, I still stand at the position, this is not recurring. So I'd like to request for a fifty-minute recess and let... and let these individuals I just mentioned to clarify, just to maybe come to concurrent or something, that there must be something in the codes that spells out recurring, the definition. Thank you, Madam Pro temp Speaker, McCabe.
Thank you for that, Delegate Simpson. So your motion to recess, you're currently on a point of privilege. I do not believe in, we're probably going to get clarification from Office of Legislative Council here. I don't believe that you can motion on a point of privilege. I'm sorry, go ahead, Delegate Simpson, go ahead.
Madam Pro temp, I make a request to you as a Pro temp Speaker to allow for a fifteen-minute recess, edit motion. I'm just requesting as of you for that fifteen-minute recess to get this clarification. Madam Pro temp Speaker, McCabe.
As Speaker Pro temp, I will take that into consideration. I'd like to ask my colleagues here, are there any objections for taking a fifteen-minute recess so that Speaker and her agents can come together to provide a definition on reoccurring costs for this legislation? Are there any objections? I'm not seeing any hands going up. I'm not hearing anything. Again, last call, are there any objections to taking a fifteen-minute recess to get the definition of reoccurring costs for... The definition is needed for this legislation. Okay, not hearing anything, not seeing any hands go up. Let's go ahead and take a fifteen-minute recess. It is now twelve eleven, we're taking a fifteen-minute recess. Committee, Council delegates, colleagues. It is now twelve twenty-six. We said we were going to take a fifteen-minute break. That fifteen-minute is up. So we're going to come back out of recess. Before we do, I want to make sure that we meet quorum. So can we do an attendance thing real quickly? Roll call, roll call. Press your green button if you're here. We have fourteen delegates who have pushed their green button stating that they are here. I know I did see Delegate Norman Begay here earlier. He has not pushed his button. Delegate Lester Yasi has not checked in. Delegate Herman Daniels was here earlier. I'm assuming that they might have stepped out for a little bit. We still have absent at this point Delegate Jermaine Simonson, Delegate Cheryl Lynn Yasi, and Delegate Curtis Yanito, who have failed to contact Speaker about being absent today or requesting for excuses. We have four delegates who have been excused. Delegate Shawna Claw. Delegate Shawna Claw, Delegate Brenda Jesus, Delegate Shawna Claw, Delegate Brenda Jesus, Delegate Shawna Claw, Delegate Brenda Jesus, Delegate Nathan Nota, and Delegate Stephen Arvizo. Delegate Nathan Nota, and Delegate Stephen Arvizo. Delegate Nathan Nota, and Delegate Stephen Arvizo. So since we have a quorum, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. So since we have a quorum, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. So since we have a quorum, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. There was a request by Delegate Danny Simpson to take a 15-minute break There was a request by Delegate Danny Simpson to take a 15-minute break There was a request by Delegate Danny Simpson to take a 15-minute break so that he could get clarification regarding the definition of reoccurring costs. so that he could get clarification regarding the definition of reoccurring costs. so that he could get clarification regarding the definition of reoccurring costs. I'm going to go ahead and at this time, there is an update on that. I'm going to go ahead and at this time, there is an update on that. I'm going to go ahead and at this time, there is an update on that. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over at this time to our Chief Legislative Counsel Dana Bobrov So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over at this time to our Chief Legislative Counsel Dana Bobrov So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over at this time to our Chief Legislative Counsel Dana Bobrov to explain the little meeting that they had just now regarding this request. to explain the little meeting that they had just now regarding this request. to explain the little meeting that they had just now regarding this request. Ms. Bobrov? Ms. Bobrov? Ms. Bobrov?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. During the 15-minute recess, the Office of the Controller, excuse me, During the 15-minute recess, the Office of the Controller, excuse me, During the 15-minute recess, the Office of the Controller, excuse me, the Controller, Office of Legislative Counsel, Department of Justice discussed the Controller, Office of Legislative Counsel, Department of Justice discussed the Controller, Office of Legislative Counsel, Department of Justice discussed the question of recurring or non-recurring. the question of recurring or non-recurring. the question of recurring or non-recurring. And the Controller has determined that And the Controller has determined that And the Controller has determined that on the second review and more in-depth analysis, on the second review and more in-depth analysis, on the second review and more in-depth analysis, that it could be deemed non-recurring expenses because it's a one-time event. that it could be deemed non-recurring expenses because it's a one-time event. that it could be deemed non-recurring expenses because it's a one-time event. So the Controller is issuing a new memorandum. So the Controller is issuing a new memorandum. So the Controller is issuing a new memorandum. Once that's received, the Office of Legislative Counsel will put together an amendment Once that's received, the Office of Legislative Counsel will put together an amendment Once that's received, the Office of Legislative Counsel will put together an amendment for presentation to the Counsel through Sponsor Simpson to complete that. for presentation to the Counsel through Sponsor Simpson to complete that. for presentation to the Counsel through Sponsor Simpson to complete that. And if that is accepted by Counsel, And if that is accepted by Counsel, And if that is accepted by Counsel, the vote requirement for this legislation, the vote requirement for this legislation, the vote requirement for this legislation, because we will not need the waiver any longer, because we will not need the waiver any longer, because we will not need the waiver any longer, that would be a regular vote requirement. that would be a regular vote requirement. that would be a regular vote requirement. The Office of Legislative Counsel needs approximately 20, 25 more minutes The Office of Legislative Counsel needs approximately 20, 25 more minutes The Office of Legislative Counsel needs approximately 20, 25 more minutes to complete this task and to receive the memorandum, the new memorandum to complete this task and to receive the memorandum, the new memorandum to complete this task and to receive the memorandum, the new memorandum from the Office of the Controller. from the Office of the Controller. from the Office of the Controller. Back to you, Madam Speaker Pro Tem. Back to you, Madam Speaker Pro Tem. Back to you, Madam Speaker Pro Tem.
Thank you for that, Dana. So just for clarification, colleagues, Thank you for that, Dana. So just for clarification, colleagues, Thank you for that, Dana. So just for clarification, colleagues, Delegate Danny Simpson called a point of privilege under Rule 16 of the Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order. Delegate Danny Simpson called a point of privilege under Rule 16 of the Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order. Delegate Danny Simpson called a point of privilege under Rule 16 of the Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order. During that time, he requested further information. During that time, he requested further information. During that time, he requested further information. That was clarified just now by Chief Legislative Counsel Dana Bobrov. That was clarified just now by Chief Legislative Counsel Dana Bobrov. That was clarified just now by Chief Legislative Counsel Dana Bobrov. She is requesting 25-minute recess so that they can get the documents in place She is requesting 25-minute recess so that they can get the documents in place She is requesting 25-minute recess so that they can get the documents in place and to develop the proper language that may amend the legislation. and to develop the proper language that may amend the legislation. and to develop the proper language that may amend the legislation. So the point of privilege, unfortunately Delegate Danny Simpson, So the point of privilege, unfortunately Delegate Danny Simpson, So the point of privilege, unfortunately Delegate Danny Simpson, you can't call a motion to recess with your point of privilege. you can't call a motion to recess with your point of privilege. you can't call a motion to recess with your point of privilege. So I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to go down. So I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to go down. So I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to go down. We do have Delegate Andy Nas, who is next in the queue. We do have Delegate Andy Nas, who is next in the queue. We do have Delegate Andy Nas, who is next in the queue. Delegate Andy Nas, you do have five minutes for debate. Delegate Andy Nas, you do have five minutes for debate. Delegate Andy Nas, you do have five minutes for debate. Don't forget to reserve your time upon completion of your debating. Don't forget to reserve your time upon completion of your debating. Don't forget to reserve your time upon completion of your debating. So Delegate Andy Nas, the floor is yours. So Delegate Andy Nas, the floor is yours. So Delegate Andy Nas, the floor is yours.
Ah, yeah, sure. Madam Speaker Pro Tem,
Ah, yeah, sure. Madam Speaker Pro Tem,
Ah, yeah, sure. Madam Speaker Pro Tem,
at this time, I will retake your statement into consideration
at this time, I will retake your statement into consideration
at this time, I will retake your statement into consideration
and I'll motion to take a 25-minute recess
and I'll motion to take a 25-minute recess
and I'll motion to take a 25-minute recess
so that OLS and the Controller are able to produce the forthcoming amendment.
so that OLS and the Controller are able to produce the forthcoming amendment.
so that OLS and the Controller are able to produce the forthcoming amendment.
I reserve my time. Thank you.
I reserve my time. Thank you.
I reserve my time. Thank you.
A motion has been made to recess for 25 minutes. A motion has been made to recess for 25 minutes. A motion has been made to recess for 25 minutes. It is not within the Council Rules of Order how to handle recesses. It is not within the Council Rules of Order how to handle recesses. It is not within the Council Rules of Order how to handle recesses. I was just now asking Chief Legislative Counsel for verification of whether a second is needed. I was just now asking Chief Legislative Counsel for verification of whether a second is needed. I was just now asking Chief Legislative Counsel for verification of whether a second is needed. However, she did indicate and advise that if there are no objections, However, she did indicate and advise that if there are no objections, However, she did indicate and advise that if there are no objections, we can take a 25-minute recess. we can take a 25-minute recess. we can take a 25-minute recess. So I'm going to give it to my colleagues at this time. So I'm going to give it to my colleagues at this time. So I'm going to give it to my colleagues at this time. Are there any objections to taking a 25-minute recess? Are there any objections to taking a 25-minute recess? Are there any objections to taking a 25-minute recess? Going once? Oh, there's two objections, I believe. Going once? Oh, there's two objections, I believe. Going once? Oh, there's two objections, I believe. Are there, is there objection? Are there, is there objection? Are there, is there objection? Oh, point of privilege, is that Delegate Slater? Oh, point of privilege, is that Delegate Slater? Oh, point of privilege, is that Delegate Slater? Okay, go ahead, Delegate. I'm sorry, I've got my reading glasses on, Delegate Slater. Okay, go ahead, Delegate. I'm sorry, I've got my reading glasses on, Delegate Slater. Okay, go ahead, Delegate. I'm sorry, I've got my reading glasses on, Delegate Slater.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, you know, requesting a clarification of information Thank you. I just want to clarify, you know, requesting a clarification of information Thank you. I just want to clarify, you know, requesting a clarification of information that at the end of the 25 minutes, we're going to have a simple majority legislation? that at the end of the 25 minutes, we're going to have a simple majority legislation? that at the end of the 25 minutes, we're going to have a simple majority legislation?
Thank you for asking that question. Point of privilege was raised by Delegate Carl Slater Thank you for asking that question. Point of privilege was raised by Delegate Carl Slater Thank you for asking that question. Point of privilege was raised by Delegate Carl Slater for additional comments that are needed at this time. for additional comments that are needed at this time. for additional comments that are needed at this time. I'm going to go ahead and since the point of privilege is regarding this legislation I'm going to go ahead and since the point of privilege is regarding this legislation I'm going to go ahead and since the point of privilege is regarding this legislation and the request for the recess, and the request for the recess, and the request for the recess, I'm going to turn the floor over to the sponsor Delegate, I'm sorry, Speaker Kristalene Curly. I'm going to turn the floor over to the sponsor Delegate, I'm sorry, Speaker Kristalene Curly. I'm going to turn the floor over to the sponsor Delegate, I'm sorry, Speaker Kristalene Curly. Point of privilege has been raised, requesting a little bit more information Point of privilege has been raised, requesting a little bit more information Point of privilege has been raised, requesting a little bit more information regarding the reason for the recess. Speaker? regarding the reason for the recess. Speaker? regarding the reason for the recess. Speaker?
Thank you, Pro Tem Speaker, for addressing that point of privilege.
Thank you, Pro Tem Speaker, for addressing that point of privilege.
Hi. Thank you, Pro Tem Speaker, for addressing that point of privilege.
As stated, Legal Counsel Ms. Bobrov did state that she is drafting an amendment
As stated, Legal Counsel Ms. Bobrov did state that she is drafting an amendment
As stated, Legal Counsel Ms. Bobrov did state that she is drafting an amendment
which will take approximately 20 to 30 minutes
which will take approximately 20 to 30 minutes
which will take approximately 20 to 30 minutes
on switching out some of the exhibits specifically to Controller's memo
on switching out some of the exhibits specifically to Controller's memo
on switching out some of the exhibits specifically to Controller's memo
from making it a non-reoccurring cost.
from making it a non-reoccurring cost.
from making it a non-reoccurring cost.
So that amendment, if passed, will make it a majority legislation, not a two-thirds legislation.
So that amendment, if passed, will make it a majority legislation, not a two-thirds legislation.
So that amendment, if passed, will make it a majority legislation, not a two-thirds legislation.
Delegate Slater, you called a point of privilege under Rule 16 of the Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order. Delegate Slater, you called a point of privilege under Rule 16 of the Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order. Delegate Slater, you called a point of privilege under Rule 16 of the Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order. Was your point of privilege addressed? Was your point of privilege addressed? Was your point of privilege addressed?
Thank you. That was a satisfactory answer. Speaker Pro Tem. Thank you. That was a satisfactory answer. Speaker Pro Tem. Thank you. That was a satisfactory answer. Speaker Pro Tem.
Colleagues, again, there is a request for a 25-minute recess. Colleagues, again, there is a request for a 25-minute recess. Colleagues, again, there is a request for a 25-minute recess. If you don't mind, colleagues, we can round that up to a 30-minute recess If you don't mind, colleagues, we can round that up to a 30-minute recess If you don't mind, colleagues, we can round that up to a 30-minute recess so that we give Office of Legislative Counsel the time that they need so that we give Office of Legislative Counsel the time that they need so that we give Office of Legislative Counsel the time that they need to draft the language for this legislation. to draft the language for this legislation. to draft the language for this legislation. Are there any objections? Are there any objections? Are there any objections? Going once? Going once? Going once? Going twice? Going twice? Going twice? Okay, we are at a 30-minute recess at this time Okay, we are at a 30-minute recess at this time Okay, we are at a 30-minute recess at this time to allow Office of Legislative Counsel to draft the necessary language for this legislation. to allow Office of Legislative Counsel to draft the necessary language for this legislation. to allow Office of Legislative Counsel to draft the necessary language for this legislation. 30-minute recess. Don't be late when you come back. 30-minute recess. Don't be late when you come back. 30-minute recess. Don't be late when you come back. If you leave, don't be late. If you leave, don't be late. If you leave, don't be late. 30-minute recess. 30-minute recess. 30-minute recess. Colleagues, lunch is on the way. Colleagues, lunch is on the way. Colleagues, lunch is on the way. So if you want to stick around, there will be lunch on the way. So if you want to stick around, there will be lunch on the way. So if you want to stick around, there will be lunch on the way. I believe it's chicken, chicken fried steak and chicken tenders is for lunch. I believe it's chicken, chicken fried steak and chicken tenders is for lunch. I believe it's chicken, chicken fried steak and chicken tenders is for lunch.
Green vote means you're, I mean green button means you're here. So if everybody can come back to the floor at this time. So if everybody can come back to the floor at this time. Shias delegate Tholff, push your green button so we know you're here. We have fourteen delegates who are present at this time who have answered roll call. So we do have a quorum. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order at 1:10 PM. Colleagues, and just a reminder, we did go into a thirty minute break to allow Office of Legislative Council, as well as Office of the Controller, to put together the necessary paperwork for legislation number 002024. So before I proceed to calling the call, uh, calling the next person on the line, I'm going to go ahead and ask Chief Legislative Council Dana Bobrov, do you have the documents needed to proceed forward with legislation number 0020-24?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have the documents necessary for the amendment requested by Delegate Simpson. And I am sending those out now.
Thank you for that, Ms. Bobrov. So with that, committee members, just a recap. Legislation number 0020-24 was called. The presenter is here, was given twenty minutes to present her legislation. A motion was made by Delegate Herman Daniels, second by Delegate Vince James. We did go into a recess to allow Office of Legislative Council to make the necessary language change for an amendment. So at this time, colleagues, I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor back over to Speaker Curly to answer the questions that were posed to her by her colleagues. And then by that time, the amendment language should have been emailed out to everyone. And then we can proceed forward with the next person in the lineup. Speaker Curly, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Pro Tem Speaker and colleagues of the Twenty-Fifth Navajo Nation Council. The Pro Tem Speaker. There was questions raised by Chair Parrish that we didn't get a chance to answer regarding the source of funding. If this was put before budget and finance during the budget season last year for unmet needs for elections. Colleagues, during that time, the unmet needs from Ms. Curly wasn't available. So however, I took the initiative to put three hundred thousand during the negotiations of the Three Branch Chiefs Meeting to put this as a line item as fixed costs. So now with the, within the budget, elections has been, for the first time, been included within the fixed costs. So meaning that every year, every budget, an automatic three hundred thousand will be put into elections just for casting any special elections or primary elections. So that, we took that route during the budget. And this will be coming from the UUFB as a supplemental. So it does, every other year, we do, they do request UUFB for, to cover elections. But the three hundred thousand underneath the fixed cost that was included from this year's budget was used to order the ballots. So that cost is not included within this request or this legislation. Thank you, Pro Tem Speaker. I believe those were some of the questions that we left out before we recessed.
Thank you for that, Speaker Curly. I believe that the last person who did make a request was Chair Parrish. We went to Delegate Andy Nez, who made a motion to go into recess at that time. He did reserve his time. Did we, what was his time? Delegate Nez, your time is four minutes and forty-three seconds. So now we're going to go down the line. We have Delegate Crady, who is next in the lineup. Delegate Crady, the floor is yours. Oh, oh, hold on, hold on. I see, I, I only see Delegate Crady. Okay, I apologize, Delegate Crady. So there is a, an issue with the buttons at this time. I'm going to call upon Delegate Johnson. You, oh, you don't, okay, no button. Okay, so we'll go back to Delegate Crady. The floor is yours. Okay, so Delegate Crady has removed her request to speak. So we'll go ahead and go back to reserve time at this time. And, and the reason why we're, we're, I'm calling upon a delegate is there's a, there was a request at this time for a, I guess, an amendment. So I don't know if, if, if a delegate wants to raise that motion. Delegate Vince James, you have twenty-eight seconds. So I'll go ahead and turn the floor over to you. Reserve time.
Speaker, I'd like to make a motion with the amendment that was provided to us, reserve my time. Thank you.
Reserve time at twenty-four seconds. Motion has been made by Delegate Vince James for amendment number one. Before I call for a second, can we go ahead and get that amendment on the screen and have it read for the record? The amendment has been emailed. Can we get it on the screen and get it read into the record, please?
Thank you, Madam Speaker Pro Tem. Amendment one, one on page one at line fifteen, delete everything after elections as follows. Overstrike waiving twelve NNC, section eight twenty E, section eight twenty F, section eight twenty J, and section eight twenty L. And overstrike two on page three at line sixteen, delete recurring and insert nonrecurring. Three, replace Exhibit B with the new Exhibit B memorandum from the Office of the Controller dated March twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four. Four on page four, lines eight through twelve in their entirety. Delete lines eight through twelve in their entirety. Overstrike section four, waiving twelve NNC, section eight twenty E, eight twenty F, section eight twenty J, and section eight twenty L. Denial of nation hereby waives twelve NNC, section eight twenty E, section eight twenty F, section eight twenty J, and section eight twenty L to allow use of the nine hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars in UUFB funds by NEA for its necessary expenditures in preparation for the upcoming twenty-twenty-four novation elections. This waiver is necessary because the proposed NEA expenditures are considered recurring government expenses. And overstrike five, renumber or reletter succeeding paragraph sections and exhibits as necessary and appropriate. The Office of Legislative Services and the Office of Legislative Council are authorized to make technical edits to this legislation and its exhibits in order to implement the council's intent in approving this amendment. The amendment supersedes inconsistent language in any other previous amendment, Madam Speaker Pro Tem.
Thank you for that reading, Jalissa. The amendment number one has been read into the record. It also has been emailed to all of you at this time. So make sure if you need to see the language, make sure you open up your email. Motion was made by Delegate Vince James. Committee members, can I get a second? Second made by Delegate George Tholff for amendment number one. Committee members, are there any questions or any comments to amendment number one? Delegate Carl Slater, the floor is yours.
Thank you. My question is to the Office of Legislative Council to explain how this rectifies the issue in the recurring costs and nonrecurring costs. And also to contemplate what precedent this would set with other types of legislations. I'll reserve my time.
Delegate Slater, your reserve time is four minutes and forty-six seconds. I'll go ahead and turn it over to the sponsor who can call upon our agent, Speaker Curly. As the sponsor of this legislation, there is a question to, I'm sorry. It's actually amendment number one. So it goes to Delegate Vince James as the sponsor for amendment, or the motion, main motion for amendment number one. The request has been made to have Chief Legislative Council answer a question. But I'm going to turn it over to you as a council. You can recognize Ms. Dana Bobrov to answer that question.
Yeah, thank you very much for that question, Honorable Slater. I'll go ahead and refer the question over to our Chief Legal Counsel, Ms. Bobrov.
Ms. Bobrov, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you very much. Just a touch of background is that, as we discussed previously, with UUFB appropriations, UUFB is a nonrecurring revenue source.
I'm sorry, Dana, I'm going to interrupt. I apologize. Whose phone is that? Okay, I apologize, Dana, that somebody's phone was going off. Colleagues, make sure your phone is on silent. It interrupts the speaker and it interrupts the work that is being done on behalf of the Navajo people here at Navajo Nation Council. So please make sure that your phone, your devices are all silenced at this time. Ms. Bobrov, again, I apologize. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. So under the Appropriations Act, you have to match up recurring expenses with recurring funding or, and the, or nonrecurring funding with nonrecurring fund source. Anyway, the UUFB is a nonrecurring fund source. Under the Appropriations Act, you can only use the UUFB for nonrecurring expenditures, except if you waive the Appropriations Act, which causes a two-thirds, requires a two-thirds vote of council. This legislation, as originally submitted and posted, the Controller had identified the expenses as recurring. And so the, you would have to waive the Appropriations Act to fund by the UUFB. However, after discussions, the Controller has determined, after a second glance at this, that this is a non, they're actually nonrecurring expenses. So therefore, they could be funded by the UUFB, which is a nonrecurring fund source. They could be funded without the need for a waiver of the Appropriations Act. Without a waiver of the Appropriations Act, this legislation requires a regular vote of council. So what the amendment does is it replaces the Controller's prior memorandum. It's Exhibit B, which stated the funding was not, was recurring. The new memo states that it is nonrecurring. And the rest of the amendment takes out the waiver of the appropriation language, Appropriation Act language, because no, not, no longer need it. Delegate Slater also requested if this was setting some type of precedent. Because I don't believe, I don't have a strong concern that it will in the fact that UUFB legislations are so fact-specific. So this would be precedent if the facts matched exactly. Doubtful that they will in the future, so. There, there is, of course, a small concern, but it's not a large concern that this would be damaging precedent. One of the good things, I think, that did come out of this discussion is the need for a actual definition in the Appropriations Act of the term recurring, the terms recurring and nonrecurring. I think that is now in Controller's headlines as we go through and look at making amendments to the Appropriations Act, the BIM, et cetera. I think that that is all I can add here, unless there's further questions. Back to you, Chair James and Speaker Pro Tem.
Thank you for that, Dana. So the, Chair James, does that conclude your answering the question that has been posed by Delegate Carl Slater for your amendment number one?
Thank you again, yes, that completes our response.
Thank you for that. So next on the queue for amendment number one, we have Delegate Vince James. The floor is yours.
Yeah, Speaker, and members of the council. If you look at Exhibit B, the memo that came from the Controller, in the subject line, it has a different dollar amount than what is specified in the middle of the letter from the Controller. So we need that corrected, just an FYI. Reserve my time, thank you.
Reserve time, Delegate Vince James, at four minutes and forty-four seconds. I believe that that question is going to, is it Ms. Bobrov? Or is it, who, who's that question going to, just for clarification, with no time taken from your, from your time, Delegate Vince James?
The question goes to the Controller, Controller McCabe.
Controller McCabe, the floor is yours. Answer the question posed by Delegate Vince James.
Oh, yeah. Should I dial Madam Speaker, or Madam Pro Tem Speaker, Charles Newton? And should I dial James for the question? So what he's referring to is in Exhibit B, the subject line reads, "UUFB requests seven hundred and six thousand," when the actual request is nine hundred and sixty-five. So I'm fixing the subject line now. And. And we'll just request to swap the memo out. But I'll get that to, and then the request to modify, I'll get that to Ms. Bobrov right now. Thank you for catching that.
Thank you for that, Mr. McCabe. So at this time, colleagues, a correction will be made to the, the subject line to correct the, the proper, or to correct the amount. Thank you for catching that, Delegate James. We don't have anybody else in the queue. So I'm going to go back to reserve time. We have Delegate Slater at four minutes and forty-six seconds for reserve time for amendment number one.
Thank you. I don't really agree with this about-face. I think this is just to get a simple majority legislation through. In terms of the way the law is written on recurring and nonrecurring, you know, it's the same budget. And to me, looking at it, this is a recurring expense because these are anticipated every two years, depending on the type of the election. In addition to the maintenance funding, that may, those maintenance dollars are things for recurring expense. So I think these are necessary. I think the appropriate way to do it is via sixteen votes. But I think at this time, I'm not going to be supporting the amendment. If this legislation is absolutely, if my vote is absolutely necessary for this legislation to pass, then I'll consider voting for the legislation. But this just seems like some maneuvering. I, I strongly support the legislation. It just needs to be sixteen, in my mind, the way I see the act. It just needs to be 16 in my mind, the way I see the act, and we can reform this for the next council. I'll waive the rest of my time, thank you very much.
Delegate Slater has waived the rest of his time for amendment number one. On reserve time, we do have Chair Vince James, four minutes and 44 seconds. The floor is yours.
Again, Pro Tem Speaker Chanelle, other speaker, other agents with Election Office. I just want to briefly say that. We got the clarification, it was clarified for us by our chief legal counsel, and then we do also have it in writing, and then we do have it on record. And so I think we are doing the proper process to get this legislation through, after it took some more depths of detailed discussions, and this is the outcome of it. And I do support this amendment on behalf of the Election Administration Office, and then also for our Navajo people that will be out there voting. And we did receive the information from Election Office on when those elections will be taking place, and then also the vacancy positions throughout the Navajo Nation. It is very important that we stand with each other to, to make sure that there is funding there for this election to occur and happen as for our Navajo people. I'll go ahead and waive the rest of my time, I'm ready to vote. Again, thank you.
Thank you for that, Delegate James. There are no other delegates in the queue at this time. Amendment number one has been offered with a motion made by Delegate Vince James, a second by Delegate George Toll. Since there's nobody else in the queue, reserve time has been waived. We'll go ahead and we'll go to the board at this time for roll call vote for amendment number one. And again, colleagues, amendment number one has already been read into the record. Delegate Crady? Voting has closed. We have 12 in favor, two oppose. Six delegates who are not voting, for the record. Four delegates have been excused. Absent from this vote, we have Delegate Lamardo Asret, Delegate Lester Yaasi, Delegate Jermaine Simonson, Delegate Cheryl N'Yazi, Delegate Curtis Yanito. I believe the amendment passes. Now we're back to main motion. We are on legislation number 0020-24, motion made by Delegate Herman Daniels, second by Delegate Vince James. We are back on the main motion at this time, colleagues. Are there any questions from any of the delegates who have not spoken at this time? We have Delegate George Toll. Shiaj? Oh. Okay, I believe that Delegate George Toll has removed himself. We do have Delegate Carl Slater as a. Next in the queue, Delegate Slater, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I've made the point that I think the items in the budget are considered, I mean, should be considered recurring because of what they're being applied toward, and that I think we should have 16 votes. I do think that when there's enough necessary political pressure, it will kind of bend. So, that said, I will waive the rest of my time, and that's it.
Thank you for that, Delegate Slater, waived the rest of his time. We are going back at this time, since nobody else is in the queue. We're going to go back to reserve time. We have Delegate Danny Simpson at three minutes and nine seconds. Delegate Simpson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem Speaker, Madam Speaker, and your agent, members of the Pro Tem Council. Again, thank you, all the guests in the gallery, and guests that are listening. Madam Pro Tem Speaker, I'd like to just make a request to Budget and Finance to work on clarifying the definition of recurring and non-recurring, and probably the best place to put it is in Appropriations Act, so we do not go through this again. So I think it should be done immediately, so just request to Budget and Finance. Also, I'd like to go ahead and yield my time to, if my brother wants the time, I'd like to yield my time to honorable Delegate Vince James. Thank you, Madam Pro Tem Speaker.
Again.
Two minutes and 31 seconds is what Delegate Simpson has left on his time. He has waived his time and offered that time to Delegate, or to Chair Vince James. Chair Vince James, do you accept that time?
Pro Tem Speaker Chanelle, yes, I'll accept.
The floor is yours.
Again, thank you, Honorable Simpson, for that time. Again, I'd like to re-focus back on the title of the legislation. The title of the legislation indicates for its expense in preparation for the 2024 Navajo Nation elections. And so that's the title. But when you start referring those information that's on the budget detail forms, it's not corresponding with each other. We need to understand and make sure that we don't do this to each other and create all of the confusions with unmet needs, and then at the same time, your annual supplemental budgets. So again, it gets really confusing when we do this. But again, as council, we've set precedents. We've done this before to each other, to where we picket back projects on one another's legislations. So again, if we do that for projects, and I rethink about that, and I said, well, you know, we as council have done that many times. And so it's just one of those typical legislations that have many different other titles all put into one, which makes it very confusing. But again, the way I understood the legislation was that it would adequately prepare for the upcoming 2024 Navajo Nation election to be conducted across the Navajo Nation. But again, that doesn't, your budget form does not correspond to that. And so I really want to emphasize that let's not do this again down the road. So, other than that, I'm ready to vote. And, again.
Thank you for that, Delegate Vince James. We now, we don't have anybody in the queue. We're going to go ahead and go back to reserve time. We have Chair Parrish, three minutes and 59 seconds. You waive your time? Can you go ahead and say that for the record?
Thank you, Speaker Pro Tem, and thank you, Speaker Curly, for bringing this legislation for the council. I waive the rest of my time, thank you.
Thank you for that, Chair Parrish. We don't have anybody else in the queue at this time, so we're going to go back to reserve time. We have Delegate Andy Naz at four minutes and 43 seconds. Delegate Naz, the floor is yours.
Again, Shada, Speaker Pro Tem, also to Speaker Curly as well for the legislation. So here, I just have one, one question for the team up there. If you can also just restate in the budget the expectations and the support that it provides to our disabled relatives. I know you mentioned the ADA compliance, but I know oftentimes that many of our chapters are not equipped for services directly impacting our disabled relatives. And for many of my colleagues here, I think just hearing that expectations here on council and before the Navajo people, so that we're privy to the information as we continue to share the information of the new primary date and other factors related to all of our voters across the Navajo Nation. Thank you, I reserve my time.
Delegate Naz, your time is three minutes and 50 seconds for reserve time. Speaker Curly, I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor back over to you at this time.
Again, Speaker Pro Tem, this afternoon, for taking the lead on this discussion this afternoon. And thank you again, colleagues, for that amendment. And in regards to Delegate Naz's questions, that was one direction that we had put as a priority is to having that discussion of how can elections be accessible to everyone, every citizen over being eligible to vote over the age of 18. So I know there were many great outcries from the last elections, the needing for new voting machines, new entrances, and even the language barriers of, you know, there's many election issues that we continue to face, but it's also another fight with the state as well, that we have to align those visions that we set, that we want all of our citizens to participate in voting. So in regards to the specific question of ADA compliant, we did give that direction to, from my office to the board, to the election board as well, and also the office here, the administration, to start coming up with upgrading the equipment and making it more accessible to all of our citizens across the Navajo Nation. So I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Curly, and she can provide some of the steps that they have taken to try to reach every citizen and to accommodate every citizen during election time.
The ADA here with the chapters. We do need, again, funding if we're going to upgrade the chapter surroundings to make it compliant. But on our end, we try to accommodate voters. Auto wheelchair bound. Again, we're trying to bring down, get the voting booths to where it is lower. We have voting booths that are high. And we used to rely on chapters. So in the future, it's just a matter of working with the chapters and hopefully getting this everything up to ADA compliance with our, with our Navajo Nation. And again, it's going to cost to, it's a matter of working with the chapters, and that's what we'll be doing from here. And, but sometimes we do get feedback that it's election, it's your project. So, it does kind of make it hard as well, but we try to. Most chapters are very receptive. But there's very few that will just state that to us. But we will make every effort to work with the chapters. We also work with the counties, and they're very strict on their compliance. So the other one is, we were upstairs, early voting. We had people come upstairs, or we brought down the ballots for early voting. So right now, we moved downstairs, and we're on the east side of the Navajo Nation Quality Inn. So that's a big plus for us, where we're, there's access for voters to come in instead of having to go upstairs. And the voting booths, again, we are hoping to purchase those because that is compliant with ADA guidelines. I'm going to have Board Supervisor, he works with the state elections, county, so.
Thank you again, colleagues, for that question. As stated before, we're putting ADA compliance as a needed, needed need throughout our whole Navajo Nation. So when we're working with chapters, it's something that we have to highlight as well at the chapter level of being. at the chapter level of being, being prepared with the elections that are coming up. So not only that, but at the central offices as well. So things that we can control at the central offices is making it more accessible. So we did review the, Ms. Curly did review the Pacific budget line items that could help to address, to improve some of those standards. Uh, thank you, Pro Tem Speaker.
Thank you for that, Speaker. Colleagues, we have, we have, uh, three new delegates who have added themselves to the queue regarding legislation number zero zero two zero dash two four. We'll go ahead and proceed at this time to Speaker Otto So. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, um, Pro Tem Speaker. Ms. Newton. There's one account where this is like about a month before the election, we ran a UUFB and we had the president line item, or line item veto the elections request to conduct the election, um, for the Navajo people. I think somewhere, uh, we need to put the, the Board of Election Supervisors and the election administration on a non-bias. Because, uh, uh, someone could view it as, as, um, you know, a conflict of interests as delegates, we are appropriating you monies. I think that, uh, council, we need to start looking at where we could try to put this, um, office as, uh, where it's not binding by the executive branch and the legislative branch. Maybe, um, Chief Justice, Court should be, where fund, mandatory funding is mandated to, to fund this. Budget projections, maybe to take the monies off the top. That way, election office is not in this ruckus every year asking the nation for money. You shouldn't be asking for na, for money from the nation. We should be giving it to you. The same goes with the chief justice. The chief justice shouldn't be asking council for money. These should be mandatory funding. The other is that I, it's good that the dialogue pertaining to the, uh, our citizens. Back home, um, there's a guy, Mr. Yazi, he's blind, legally blind. And, uh, he makes the chapter meeting and, uh, he makes his way up the steps by himself. And I'm really, really, really amazed. I use, that's the reason why I can't say, uh, you know, I always say, you can't say you can't. People with, uh, disabilities, they make that work for them to attend these meetings. But we have to look at, uh, our, um, structures across the nation. Uncle, whether we have to start putting, uh, have, holding these elections at facilities that actually have compliances. Some chapters don't have it, some chapters have it. But we have to have that dialogue on where can we have the, these elections to benefit and meet the need of our disabled citizens across the nation. The other is that, um, I would recommend to the election administration to have a direct dialogue with that, with, with that, um, group of citizens, the people that are disabled. What other, what ways can we accommodate you?
Speaker Otto So, you are out of time. We are on zero zero two zero dash two four. We have Delegate George Toth, who is in the lineup next. Delegate Toth, she's, she, she, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam, uh, Pro Tem Speaker.
Okay, next in the queue. We have Delegate Johnson. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Pro Tem Speaker. To, uh, thank Speaker Curly and agents for bringing forth this, uh, legislation. My question for the election office as well as the election board. Does the election staff regulate the campaign, the candidate's campaign, um, about a hundred feet away from the chapter house? And also my second question, has your voting machine been upgraded? Two questions, I reserve my time.
Thank you for that, Delegate Johnson, reserved time at four minutes and twenty seconds. Since we don't have anybody else in the queue, Speaker Curly, I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor back over to you to answer the questions that have been posed by your colleagues. The floor is yours, Speaker Curly.
Thank you, Speaker Pro Tem, for allowing, giving us the time to, for response. Uh, thank you, uh, Honorable Dr. Andy Nas and Delegate So, Delegate Toth and Vice Chair Johnson for your questions. And thank you, Delegate for highlighting the need to, how can we start investing into our elections? Uh, we, we know every year election does, every two years election does happen, so we are on staggered elections along with, uh, the chapter officials and also delegates. So in two years again, or within the next one will be, uh, the delegate and also the president's elections. So the short turnaround during our last budget session or discussion with our three branches was, each of the branch chiefs were given a, a number by the controller and say, this is the amount, the budget that we are working with this year. So we were really fortunate to have the permanent trust fund help, um, with our shortfalls from our revenues. So since that discussion, there is only a certain amount of money that we work with, with underneath each branch. So what we did this past year, I took the lead on doing the fixed costs for elections. So right now, the minimum that we could do was three hundred thousand. So every year, so hopefully in the next negotiation round that we can put additional money back into that fixed cost, which meaning that before budget, that, uh, fixed cost is already taken out from the budget to already fund elections. So that was one avenue that we took this budget cycle was for three hundred thousand. I know elections usually cost over, a little bit over a million, so that did help a little to, uh, start purchasing the ballots. So that was one discussion that we can continue to have for this budget session is putting more money into that fixed cost line item to start generating those money for elections. So for the other questions, I can have, uh, Ms. Curly, our interim director, also address some of the questions that were raised specifically to how, how the elections administration, the board expedites the, the voting processes throughout the Nav, throughout the Navajo Nation. Uh, Ms. Curly?
Campaign limitation, uh, on, on election day, uh, twenty-five feet, it used to be a hundred feet, now twenty-five feet. So exterior walls of the building, eh, eh, yeah, the, uh, poll officials, eh, chief poll judge, eh, adas, so within twenty-five feet from the exterior wall of the building, eh, there's no campaigning. So, uh, in, uh, auto voting machine, uh, we are working with the, our, our ballot company. But, or the latest is that, they're still pretty good, it'll, it'll go through. And if we are to upgrade, we're going to be upgrading to a similar version of what we are currently using. If we were to go beyond that, like ballot on demand, electronic, eh, we're going to need the, the internet. And at this point, we're, we're, we're lacking internet, good internet services out at the chapter. Of course, so that one is a slow process, but we are looking at upgrading the voting machine to, uh, a, a later version of what we are currently using. So, um, Mr. Noble, they have issues with it.
One hundred and ten chapters.
Hi, thank you, Pro Tem Speaker. That concludes our responses. Thank you for that, Speaker. We do have a new colleague in the lineup, Delegate Norman Begay. The floor is yours.
I thank you, Speaker, uh, the Speaker, own agents. Got a, did election by, I have a couple of issues with, uh, you guys paying the election poll workers, yeah. It's been over a year, um, trying to get some money for my, uh, people to get paid. Just a simple mess up with the computer, yeah, reversing the A and N. The check was there, but they just couldn't issue another check. She proved, she proved with her ID and social security, but to this day, she hasn't gotten paid yet. Look at how many, I think there's about five or six that are on eastern side that haven't gotten paid yet. Workers right, yeah. Maybe these poll workers were good workers, yeah. You think they would come aboard again, work again of what they're going through now? Do they already have experience, yeah? Look over these people that have worked the polls and, I don't know how many, there's probably more out there, you know? Look at your books and pay these people out. Like I said, it's over about a year now that she hasn't even got her check yet, you know? It's just a comment, thank you.
Thank you for that, Delegate Begay. I, we don't have any other colleagues in the queue at this time, so I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor back over to you, Speaker, for response.
Hi, thank you, Pro Tem Speaker. I'm going to refer to Ms. Curly regarding the expediting payments to the workers, the poll workers. So, Ms. Curly?
Are they, um, bringing forth your concern? The, uh, the ones that we are having issues with are the ones that are tribal employees, uh, second, second job, uh, clearance. Of course, we are still working, we are still working, trying to get that cleared. They finance, they have a, a certain way that their name is printed. Oh, lay finance, they have a, a certain way that their name is printed. Auto [unintelligible]. If there's a discrepancy in the spelling of the name, then they, they do reject it from there. But we are still addressing that and tribal, tribal employees is what we're, we're having issues with, and those are the ones that we're still trying to get paid out. So, oh, Annie? Yeah.
Speaker Curly, does that, are you finished answering questions?
Yes, that concludes our responses.
Thank you for that. So, we don't have anybody in the queue at this time, colleagues, so I'm gonna go back to reserve time. Again, we are on zero zero two zero dash two four. We have Delegate Vince James at twenty-four seconds.
Thank you again, but I'll go ahead and waive the rest of my time. I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
Delegate Vince James waives his time. We don't have anybody in the queue, so I'm gonna go on with reserve time. We have Delegate Andy Nas, three minutes and fifty seconds. Delegate Nas, the floor is yours.
Oh, yeah, sure, the Speaker Pro Tem, and again, colleagues for addressing that. It was important for me as a delegate to ask on the budget where a lot of those funds would be most supportive to our relatives with disabilities and to ensure that any boots, I know you mentioned that they were becoming wheelchair accessible, also if trainings. I know we have a lot of language barriers, not only with our language, [unintelligible], but we also have relatives who speak American Sign Language. Eh, [unintelligible]. So, those are just some of the questions and some of the important things that I wanted to bring forth when I was looking through the budget. But, you know, just moving forward, I think in any case, for us to be very creative on how we reach to our voters, especially in urban areas as well. I know that that's also a challenge for our relatives to travel far distance, to be able to vote here on Navajo Nation, but to expand as well. And I know this is probably some areas that the team has already considered, but just looking forward to how that discussion also moves forward aside from this. So, thank you again, Speaker Curly. Auto to Ms. Curly. Shazade, auto to Mister Noble as well. Yeah, Speaker Pro Tem, I waive the rest of my time. Yeah.
Delegate Andy Nas waives the rest of his time. Colleagues, I don't see anybody in the queue at this time, any new delegates, so we'll go ahead and go back to reserve time. We have Delegate Casey Allen Johnson with four minutes and twenty seconds. Delegate Johnson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Pro Tem speaker. Thank you for your response regarding the, the voting machines and upgrade and, you know, we take a look at a lot of this, the candidates, the filing, you know, one hundred and ten chapters, it's about one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. That goes back into general funds. I think that needs to redirect that back to election office. That's my, you know, my thoughts on that. And then, the reason why I brought, asked that question on election staff regulating, you know, the, the campaign sites, not the campaign sites, yeah, the campaign sites and to twenty-five feet, because there was an issue regarding chapter officials interfering with elections in western, dictating, you know, who can campaign, who can't campaign in, in chapter facilities. And there was a, um, communication, you know, there that, you know, they were putting campaign outside the fence line and stuff like that. So, we need a memo directed toward the chapter officials as well as the chapter staff not to interfere with election. So, I'd like to make that a recommendation to the election office as well, the election board. And also, filing fees, not filing fees, your expense report need to be submitted on time or disqualified, whether you win or you lose, they need to be submitted. If they've not, if they do not submit, even if they lose, then they shouldn't be able to run again. That's my thoughts on that. So, I'd like to reserve my time and hear your response.
Reserve time, Delegate Johnson at two minutes and seventeen seconds. Speaker Curly, I'm gonna go ahead and turn the floor back over to you. We don't have anybody else in the lineup right now. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Pro Tem speaker, for allowing us to, to respond. Thank you, Vice Chair Johnson. In regards to who has authority on the grounds during election day is an issue that I know we have been foreseeing since the last election. So, for your recommendation of issuing a memo of who has authority of manning and manpowering the, the stations and not only that, but the chapters, but also the senior centers. So, there is that state collaboration as well that needs to happen, and I know we've been working closely with the governor's office and the secretary of state to start coordinating some of those efforts, because it would be multiple polling sites during election day, at the senior center, and then sometimes at the chapter or any other designated area. So, those types of, there are agreements that are made between the chapters, so we can reiterate that, that the administration does have the full authority of regulating within the areas, the premises, and all of that authority. So, there shouldn't be any chapter official or any of the chapter staff interfering with elections during election day. Ms. Curly, maybe you can add on with that as well?
Again, we contact the chapters and we do ask that the chapter premises be closed so there's nobody on site. And we, but we're, at this point, we can only recommend, it's not really, it's not written anywhere, but we do have access to the chapter houses. The other thing on the campaign expense report, [unintelligible]. You pass laws, if a person does not file their campaign expense report as required, which is the tenth day after an election, we, the election administration disqualifies them. And if they don't, if they, if they, whether they lose or not and they don't file, then they're barred from running for office for five years. What's up? About maybe a couple of months ago, that's based on the change, yeah, the election code amendments. So, that is in play. So, yeah.
Colleagues, it looks like we lost quorum. Three, so there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. Okay, we have quorum. Oh, we have Delegate Slater's fixing his laptop with IT on this side. We have Delegate Karati on this side getting some snacks, so we got quorum, we're good. I apologize, Speaker Curly, I'm turning back the floor back to you.
I think you, Pro Tem, that concludes our responses.
Thank you for that, speaker. We don't have anybody else in the lineup at this time. We are at, we are still debating legislation number zero zero two zero dash two four. I'm gonna go ahead and go back to reserve time. We have Delegate Casey Allen Johnson with two minutes and seventeen seconds. The floor is yours, Delegate Johnson.
Thank you, Pro Tem speaker. This is merely a, a comment, an experience that I'd like to share is that, you know, we have chapter officials during last election that really interfered into, with the election, where they were redirecting campaigns and individuals that were supporting candidates. So, I don't think your recommendation is good enough. It needs to be a directive. You are the election office, you know, and it's every person's right to vote as well as campaign. So, I would like for you to address that to the chapters, the voting sites, that, you know, the chief poll, whoever's, you know, there, that they are in charge of the voting capacity within the chapters or that area. So, again, I do not want to hear about an official or a delegate or anybody interfering with elections. That's all I want to comment on. And I'll go ahead and defer the rest of my time to Honorable Vince James.
Forty-seven seconds?
All right, set.
All right.
Thank you.
Chair James, floor is yours.
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Honorable Johnson. Auto, in regards to staffing, I know election office has an issue with staffing, has an issue with the six B rollouts and the FMIS. I would like to make a request, a directive to Speaker's office. If you can, please assist the election administration office. Ashon, the equidono [unintelligible]. And I'd like to make that as a directive to, to you, speaker, and your staff to, to assist the election administration office in that way. So, [unintelligible].
Yeah, Delegate Vince James. So, colleagues, we do have a motion on the floor right now for legislation number zero zero two zero dash two four. When a, when a delegate requests a directive, usually it's a motion for a directive followed by the language of that directive, so that we have it on the record. And that, because we have a motion on the floor at this time with legislation number zero zero two zero dash two four, we normally will hear the motion for a directive after the vote is taken on the current motion that's on the floor. Does that, does that make sense? Because we have a motion for legislation number zero zero two zero dash two four, Delegate Vince James as well as Delegate Casey Allen Johnson ask for a directive, they can make that motion after the vote has been taken on legislation number zero zero two zero dash two four. So, that option is available to you, Delegate James and Delegate Johnson. Committee members, I'm sorry, colleagues, we do not have anybody in the queue at this time to speak. We have gone through reserve time. Are we ready to vote on legislation number zero zero two zero dash two four? Colleagues, going once, going twice? All right, we're gonna go ahead and go to second reading. Upon completion of the second reading, we will go straight to vote. Staff, can you assist us with second reading of, of legislation number zero zero two zero dash two four?
Thank you, Madam Speaker Pro Tem. Amendment one, one on page one, line fifteen, delete everything after elections as follows. Overstrike waiving twelve NNCs, section eight twenty E, section eight twenty F, section eight twenty J, and section eight twenty L. And overstrike two, page three at line sixteen, delete recurring and insert underlined non-recurring. Three, replace exhibit B with the new exhibit B memorandum from the Office of the Controller dated March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Four on page four, lines, delete lines eight through twelve in their entirety. Overstrike section four, waiving twelve NNCs, section eight twenty E, section eight twenty F, section eight twenty J, and section eight twenty L. The Navajo Nation hereby waives twelve NNCs, section eight twenty E, section eight twenty F, section eight twenty J, and section eight twenty L to allow use of the nine hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars in UFP funds by NEA for its necessary expenditures in preparation for the upcoming twenty twenty-four Navajo Nation elections. This waiver is necessary because the proposed NEA expenditures are considered recurring government expenses. And overstrike five, renumber, relater succeeding paragraph sections and exhibits as necessary and appropriate. The Office of Legislative Services and the Office of Legislative Council are authorized to make technical edits to this legislation and its exhibits in order to implement the council's intent in approving this amendment. This amendment supersedes inconsistent language in any other previous amendment. Madam Speaker Pro Tem.
Thank you for that, Ms. Johnson. Second reading has been read into the record for legislation number zero zero two zero dash two four. We will now proceed with voting on this legislation. Colleagues, you have less than a minute to vote. Voting has closed, colleagues. Legislation number zero zero two zero dash two four, which requires a majority vote, hereby passes with thirteen in favor, one opposed, six delegates who are not voting, four of those delegates are excused. For the record, absent is Delegate Lamardo Assaret, Delegate Lester Yazi, Delegate Jermaine Simonson, Delegate Cherylyn Yazi, Delegate Curtis Yanito. Thank you, colleagues, for that vote. We now go forward to the next item on the agenda, legislation number zero zero six seven dash two four. Do you wanna, do you? Point of order called by Delegate Amber Kennesbuck Karati. Point of order, Delegate Karati, the floor is yours.
Uh, yes, thank you, Pro Tem speaker. I'd like to change my vote to a red vote with that amendment that's attached. Thank you.
Delegate Karati. On May twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, colleagues, under legislation number zero zero nine eight dash two three, there was a question regarding the language that was used by speaker at that time, when the language of, let's move on. when the language of "let's move on" was used. Per the rule that was established at that time, late votes can be counted as long as a motion is not called. Per that precedence that was, that was established on May twenty-six, twenty twenty-three with legislation number zero zero nine eight dash two three, I will recognize, as Speaker Pro Tem, I will recognize that request to change your vote to red at this time. So that changes the vote now to... What was the vote? How much? So that vote then becomes twelve in favor, two opposed. And we do have, I believe it's... Six delegates who are absent. Five delegates who... No. We have four who are excused. Then we have Simonson that's absent, Cheryl Lynn Yasi that's absent, Yanito that's absent, and Lamardo Asaret that's absent. So we do have eight, eight delegates not voting. Delegate Crotty, are you good with that before I call the next motion? Colleagues, just to catch everybody up to speed, Dana is now checking the rules to see if this legislation does have the necessary votes for it to pass. The question is, majority vote. Is the majority considered the delegates who are voting today? Or is majority the delegates for the full council? Per Chief Legislative Council, legislation number zero zero two zero dash two four has received the majority votes that are necessary to pass this legislation at this time. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move forward now to the next item on the, on the agenda, legislation number zero zero six seven dash two four, sponsored by Chair Shandine Parish. Chair is already set and ready to go. Legislation number zero zero six seven dash two four, can we go ahead and get that legislation read into the record at this time?
Thank you, Madam Speaker Pro Tem. Item B, legislation zero zero six seven dash two four, in action relating to an emergency of the Navo Nation Council, amending Navo Nation Council Resolution Number CJY forty-one dash twenty-one, section seven, to comply with the U.S. Treasury's obligation deadlines. Prime sponsor is Honorable Shandine Parish. This legislation is final authority of Navo Nation Council. Per Navo Nation Council Rules of Order Rule Nine, legislation has been read into record by electronic voice recording. Madam Speaker Pro Tem.
Thank you for that, Ms. Johnson. The legislation has been read into the record. Again, legislation number zero zero six seven dash two four, sponsored by Chair Shandine Parish. Can I get a motion and a second? Motion made by Delegate Norman Begay. Can I get a second? Second made by Delegate Vince James. Per the Council Rules of Order, Chair Parish, you have twenty minutes to present your legislation. You can call up to two agents to help assist you with your legislation. Uh, this time, I'd like to remind everyone to make sure that their phone or their devices are on silent so that there's no interruption to the presentation that will be given to us here today by Chair Parish on legislation number zero zero six seven dash two four. Chair Parish, a motion has been made by Delegate Norman Begay, second by Delegate Vince James. The floor is yours for your presentation. Colleagues, per the Navo Nation Council Rules of Order, under Rule Ten G, it does say the time allowed in total for presentation on one item shall not exceed twenty minutes. I believe that that, that does require a presentation to be made of twenty minutes. If the presenter doesn't want to use up the twenty minutes, she can use up however much time she wants. And if there's no questions, we can go straight to vote. Chair Parish, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Speaker Pro Tem, and good afternoon to my colleagues on the Twenty-Fifth Navo Nation Council. I want to say a big thank you to each and every one of you who have signed on to the petition and who have shown up today to consider the legislation before us, zero zero six seven two four. I'll make this presentation short. Essentially, what it does is it crosses out section F, or sorry, item F under section seven of CJY forty-one twenty-one, and inserts language that makes the deadlines, um, it makes the deadline reflect the United States Treasury deadlines. And again, colleagues, this is specific to the administrative dollars, which will save our FRF jobs across the nation. Um, thank you for signing on and supporting this legislation. I just want to also commend my colleagues on the Budget and Finance Committee. Uh, we've been working diligently on combing through the deadlines and making recommendations to the council. So thank you to the colleagues who have, who are here today, and safe travels to everybody. Uh, thank you, Speaker Pro Tem. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you for that, Chair Parish. Legislation number zero zero six seven dash two four, uh, motion was made, second by, a motion made by Delegate Norman Begay, second by Delegate Vince James. Are there any questions to legislation number zero zero six seven dash two four? Second call, are there any questions to legislation number zero zero six seven dash two four? Last and final call, are there any questions to legislation number zero zero six seven dash two four? For the record, no delegate has added their name to the queue, and I don't see any hands going up at this time. So we'll go ahead and we will proceed forward since no amendments have been offered. A, a reading of the legislation has been, has been read into the record. Let's go ahead and vote on legislation number zero zero six seven dash two four. And while everyone is voting, this is a majority vote legislation. With less than thirty seconds on the clock, we have two delegates that have not voted, Delegate Norman Begay, Delegate Vince James. Voting has closed. We have fourteen in favor, zero opposed, six delegates who are not voting. Four of those delegates are excused. For the record, legislation number zero zero six seven dash two four, we have absent Delegate Lamardo Asaret, Delegate Lester Yasi, Delegate Jermaine Simonson, Delegate Cheryl Lynn Yasi, Delegate Curtis Yanito. Legislation number zero zero six seven dash two four hereby passes. All right, colleagues, we are now at item six on the agenda, close of session. Before anybody makes a motion or a second, are there any announcements that need to be made at this time? Oh, we have a hand up. Delegate Casey Allen Johnson, the floor is yours for announcements.
Thank you, Pro Tem Speaker. This time, I'd like to invite the Twenty-Fifth Navo Nation Council to the ribbon-cutting ceremony at N seventy-one in Bird Springs Chapter tomorrow at twelve o'clock. So they finally completed one hundred percent of N seventy-one. So it's a very, uh, um, how would you say, it's, uh, it's gonna be a good celebration for the community as well all of those past leaderships that were involved in making this happen. So just wanted to extend the invitation to everyone here. Let's have a safe day, rest of your day. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Delegate Johnson, ribbon-cutting ceremony of N seventy-one to take place tomorrow. Would be great to see all of our delegates out there, but some are on travel and some are, will probably be excusing themselves from that event. Are there any other announcements at this time, colleagues? Just a reminder, there were two requests for directives. Those directives were sent out. You can make a motion and a second for those directives, even though we are still on announcement. Before I call for a motion, I would like to also remind my colleagues that we do have a regular NABIC etiquette scheduled for this Thursday. So just a reminder, NABIC etiquette does begin at ten o'clock AM. Um, did I see a hand go up? Oh, Delegate Vince James, did you have your hands up? Oh, you're on the queue. Delegate Vince James, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion with my directive letter that was emailed out, uh, to the Twenty-Fifth Navo Nation Council in regards to Speaker and Speaker's staff to assist the Navo Nation Election Administration Office with, because they do have staffing issues, and then the FMIS, and then the six B rollouts. So, that's just my directive really quickly, and it was emailed out. Thank you.
There is a motion on the floor at this time. We have not called for a motion to adjourn, colleagues, so we are still in council. Second is being made at this time for that directive by Delegate George Toth. Committee, our council colleagues, that directive was sent to you via email. Motion has been called, second has been made. Are there any questions regarding the directive at this time? Dana, there's no attachment. I apologize for the record, the attachment has not been sent. Dana's gonna send that out right now. Colleagues, refresh your email, that directive has been sent out. I'll give you guys a couple of minutes to look it over. Motion has been made by Delegate Vince James, second by Delegate George Toth. Are there any questions, any comments, any issues to the directive? I'll have Julissa read the directive for the record. Julissa?
Thank you, Madam Speaker Pro Tem. This is a directive to Office of the Speaker. The Office of the Speaker, the Speaker of the Navo Nation shall provide assistance to legislative branch employees to ensure those who are required to become FMIS six B certified are certified by the end of the third quarter of FY twenty twenty-four. The Office of the Speaker shall report the number of legislative branch FMIS six B certifications at end of the third quarter of twenty twenty-four. Madam Speaker Pro Tem.
Colleagues, the directive has been read into the record. Motion was made by Delegate Vince James, second by Delegate George Toth. Colleagues, again, are there any questions, any comments, any issues to the directive? Going once? Going twice? Okay, let's go to the vote. Let's go to vote for the directive. For the record, no hands went up. Nobody was asking for, to be recognized, and there was no names in the queue. Directive requires a majority vote. Chair Parish, you have less than one minute to make your vote, to cast your vote. Colleagues, the directive was made, a motion was made for a directive. That motion was made by Delegate Vince James. It was seconded by Delegate George Toth. The vote is fourteen in favor. We do have four delegates who are excused, five delegates who are absent. For the record, absence include Delegate Lamardo Asaret, Delegate Lester Yasi, Delegate Jermaine Simonson, Delegate Cheryl Lynn Yasi, and Delegate Curtis Yanito. Delegate Jermaine Simonson, Delegate Cheryl Lynn Yasi, and Delegate Curtis Yanito. The directive passes. We're still on announcements at this time, colleagues, but we can... Colleagues, you can make a motion to adjourn, and we can get that with a second motion. Motion made by Delegate Norman Begay to adjourn. Can I get a second? Second made by Speaker Otto So. I don't think anybody wants to debate this, so we're going to go straight to vote for adjournment. Voting for adjournment, colleagues. Less than 1 minute to vote. Speaker Otto So, Delegate Carl Slater, Delegate Casey Allen Johnson. Voting has closed with a vote of 14 in favor, 0 opposed. 10 delegates not voting, 4 of them excused, 5 who are absent. This council is hereby adjourned at 2:52 p.m. Safe travels, everyone, and we'll see you guys at NABI on Thursday. Just a reminder, colleagues, today supposedly is the last day to input your P-card information. So please make sure you input your P-card information. You'll get suspended. Controller McCabe is over here, so if you need to...